WinCam, let me know when we're ready. I know you just got in the room. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of Monday, August 18th. I'm Michelle Pryor, joined by Vice Chair Anthea Brady and members Bill McGonigal, Paris Biani, Mike Bentencourt, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph in her last WinCam-recorded meeting. We're going, since we ran a little late with the executive session, we're going to do donations. Is anyone here for public comment on an item not on the agenda? No? Okay. So we'll do donations, then we'll do our two public hearings, and then we'll go back to the Town Manager's Report.
Move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from Randy Black Schaefer to the Conservation Commission Fund.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Move that we accept with gratitude a grant of $400 from the Winchester Cultural Council to the Winchester Historical Society to be put towards a replacement of the Winchester history sign.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $100 from Nuvell Holdings LLC to the Recreation Department for the Concerts on the Common.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Move that we accept a grant of $4,250 from the Winchester Mount Vernon House to the Council on Aging to promote outcomes for caregiving initiatives.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Okay. So at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. First item, a business's EverSource grant of location, Main Street. Jackie and Matt, if you'd like to come on up. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have your information in the packet. This is for the Children's Own School. So take it away. I think I have one question, but you can, maybe Matt, I think you often tee it up, and then...
For what it's worth, having read the material, I don't have to hear anything other than the answers to your questions. I'm prepared to vote in favor of this right away.
Okay. Jackie, go ahead.
No, we'd just like to install 80 feet of conduit, and it's for the crosswalk signals on Main Street.
Okay.
For the school.
It's RFB.
Yep. Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon.
And how far, how much of the road will be sort of disrupted, and for how long?
So the work is almost essentially done because the conduit was being installed by DPW. So they had it already actually started so they can get the equipment in before school starts. So EverSource would be doing the wiring to get it done. So the trench is probably about, I don't know, 18 inches wide. It's not very wide, and Bob said he's going to be working on the sidewalk restoration this week.
Okay. That was my question, was disruption. Okay. Any other?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Is anybody here from the public for this grant of location that wants to be heard? Okay. Seeing none, now we can close the hearing. And then if we have any additional debate, or we can take a motion.
Move that we approve the grant of location for EverSource to install approximately 80 feet of conduit within the public right-of-way to provide electric service to RFB at the crosswalk at Children's Own on Main Street.
Second.
Okay. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
Next up is the All Alcohol License, Section 12, for Nuvell Holdings. If you could come on up. So we're in, actually introduce yourself for the record, I think, and for the video, if you could.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board, for the record. Attorney Stephen Chikatelli, I'm here before you this evening representing Nuvell Holdings, doing business as Nuvell Maison, 30 Church Street in Winchester. If I could pass along these packets, there is one for the clerk that has some originals and interim receipts. We're here before you this evening requesting a Chapter 138, Section 12 license for a restaurant. You may be familiar with the location. The Board was kind enough to grant a Chapter 15 package store license so that wine and other alcoholic beverages could be sold. The purpose of this license request is for the café area, for those of you who have been to the establishment. As you enter from Church Street, it is sort of to the rear on the left. Several patrons have requested perhaps wine being served with sandwiches, baguettes, quiches, et cetera. And of course, that is not allowed when you have a Chapter 15 package store license. So that's really the purpose of the request. In terms of the application, I would hope it's complete. We have the manager's certificate, quarry release forms, proof of citizenship. Certificates of good standing, the LLC, oh, and I'm sorry, Celine Kimberley is the manager of the LLC, of the present liquor license, and she's the member of the LLC. Because this is a Delaware LLC, I submitted a certificate of good standing from the state of Delaware and also from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The site plan or plan that you have is identical to what you presently have on record. However, there's more of a demarcation shown for the café. In the packet that I just gave you, the current certificate of good standing from Massachusetts has expired. That's only good for 60 days, so I want to make sure you had a current certificate of good standing for your review, and I'm sure the ABCC would want that. There's a copy of the café menu or a portion of it, just so the Board can see what is presently offered. When you enter the café now, you might place an order and pick up the food being to your table. With alcohol service, it must be served by an employee of the establishment and brought to the table, so there cannot be a service bar. So I wanted you to have the certifications for all the employees that will be doing the serving, showing that they are in fact TIPS-certified. There's my affidavit under Chapter 138 indicating that I did cause the legal notice to be published in the Daily Times Chronicle and mailed via certified mail to the abutters in the two churches within 500 feet. In the packet that I labeled for the clerk, there's my original affidavit, the green receipts, as well as the original certificate of good standing. And the final item is an advisory, actually from 2016, and I did speak to the Deputy Executive Director of the ABCC, Ryan Melville. This is still the current advisory. You may recall there was a prohibition of owning both types of license, a restaurant license, Section 12, and a Section 15 package store license. This allows it with two caveats. One, that there be a delineated area so that if someone is in the café, and there'll be signs posted, they can't take an alcoholic beverage and go to another section of the store. And also that 50% of the proceeds or gross proceeds must come from groceries. And I, as I'm, I'm sure the Board members are aware, even though we have a package store license, that was never the main business plan. That was just to allow the sale of wine and so forth. And if you enter the store and go to the far right, the wine room itself is probably 1/7 of the gross floor area. So it was never the intent to create, obviously, a liquor store. It was simply to sell, you know, charcuterie, cheeses, basically anything imported from France. My only complaint is there's only one item from Italy in the entire store, but...
To be expected.
Basically, that's the intent, to have the two licenses, to have the separate area. And we do understand those two requirements. I'd be happy to answer any questions members may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Any objections from any of the abutters?
Nope. I have not received any, certainly.
No, thank you very much. And Mr. Chikatelli, you're always very thorough with your applications, so we appreciate that as well. There's a lot of detail that goes into this, as you know, and so it helps us to be able to rely on the information we have here to know that all the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted. So thank you. And certainly, Nuvell Maison has been such a great part of the community, so we look forward to hearing more, and I think this really makes sense for the location, and there's certainly demand for it, so.
Yeah. Okay. I have no other questions. Is anybody here from the public here for this hearing? No. Okay. Then we can close the Alcohol, All Alcohol License, Section 12 hearing, and then we can take a motion and debate that.
Move that we approve the Alcohol License, Section 12, All Alcohol, oh my gosh, All Alcoholic Beverages, for Celine Kimberley of Nuvell Holdings LLC, doing business as Nuvell Maison at 30 Church Street.
Second.
Okay. Any additional debate?
Now, Mr. Chikatelli, do you want us to put a condition of an additional Italian one?
One more Italian one.
Maybe one, one. Thank you.
I'm going to rule that out of order. This is about alcohol. Unless it's like limoncello, we're not going to go there. All right. So, an additional debate. This is a well-thought-through and comprehensive application, so thank you for that. Any additional questions, debate? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience tonight. Okay. So now let's go back to Town Manager's Report. Move into our business.
Thank you, Michelle. First, I just wanted to take a moment before I get into my report this evening to recognize the service of our Special Project Manager, Meg White, as well as our Assistant Town Manager, Mark Too Good, who will both be retiring in the coming weeks. I've had the pleasure of working with both Mark and Meg over the 20 years that I've worked for the town, and they have had a hand in almost every capital project the town has completed in that timeframe, from any small traffic calming projects that you see, to the town's large-scale flood mitigation program, to several once-in-a-generation school-building projects. Their professionalism and dedication to the town of Winchester, the community of Winchester, is unmatched. I'm grateful to call both of them not just colleagues, but friends, and I hope that you all join me in thanking them for their service to our community and wishing them well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a few other updates for the Board. Fall Town Meeting schedule, so the warrant will close on Friday, September 19th. The Select Board will vote the Fall Town Meeting warrant at a posted meeting October 6th, and then the motions and backgrounds are due to the Town Manager's Office on Friday, October 27th. Town Meeting itself starts on Monday, November 3rd, and will continue on the Monday, Thursday schedule until complete. The WCCP is in the process of reviewing applications for CPA funding for this Fall Town Meeting. They have a packed calendar for the coming weeks, so they will be meeting every, once a week for the coming weeks. Upcoming this Tuesday, August 19th, Wednesday, August 27th, Thursday, August 4th, they'll be reviewing proposals from applicants. And then the week of September 15th, they expect to have final project scoring and vote on a Town Meeting warrant article by the 19th deadline. Some project updates, the Morocco School Life Extension Project is going along well. All the abatement work is complete. Installation of the carpet tiles is complete, and the LVT flooring is well underway. Painting is complete, and then the movers will be back in once the flooring work is complete. A few other construction updates, the town will be updating our website. The new, the new website design will go online this Thursday, so I encourage everybody to take a look at the new design. The Shore Road Covert Project is well underway. The contractor expects to be able to keep one lane of the bridge open as work progresses. The sidewalk is currently closed. The goal is to reopen that prior to the start of school, and the full project is expected to be completed in early November. The DPW is in the process of repaving a section of Main Street. The paving itself is scheduled for later this week, the 20th and 21st, weather permitting. Ginfield Lighting Project, which was funded Town Meeting about a year ago, is complete, except for the field restoration work, which will be done once the weather is cooler. The High School Concrete Floor Repairs, that work is expected to be substantially complete by Labor Day before school starts. The McCall and Ambrose Roof Project is ongoing. Work at Ambrose itself is complete, and all the replacement work at the McCall School will be completed by Labor Day, and some additional repair work will continue through the end of September. The Lind School Traffic Calming Work is ongoing. The work on the Horn Pond Brook roadside of the school will be complete before the start of school, as well as paving on Brantwood Road. Some of the final sidewalk work on the Pond Street side will extend into September. And the High School Gym Floor Project is expected to be complete by October 15th. And then just a few updates at the transfer station. So as you all know, the town transitioned to a new vendor, the transfer station, as of July 1st, for recycling, and they have implemented a cardboard-only recycling waste stream. The cardboard itself, although the town pays per ton to dispose of our recycling, they are disposing of the cardboard itself at no cost to the town. So that is overall savings for residents who are able to help us improve that cardboard recycling. The town did recently take delivery of our new trauma screener, which we received as a combination of capital funds and an estate earmark that allows us to process our yard waste. And the construction is nearing completion on the building for the anaerobic food digester. The digester itself is expected to be delivered next week. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. So I have one question, which is, does that high school gym timeline allow for, obviously it allows for winter sports, do you know anything about fall sports and impacts with, you know, volleyball or any other season?
Yeah. So I think with the work being completed October 15th, obviously, they won't be able to start.
Right.
In the gym, whether there are fall sports that can take advantage of a few weeks of it, I'm not sure what the schedules are, but I'm sure that's being worked out with the school department.
Okay. Maybe they could host a tournament game. Okay. Any other questions for Beth's report? Before I thank Beth. So Beth, this is your last meeting with us on camera. You're going to have a few more, probably state-of-the-town Zoom calls between now and September 3rd, but in Labor Day weekend in between. Thank you for your words. Certainly, Meg's departure in a couple of weeks is a huge loss for the town, and Mark about a month out at the end of September. But just wanted to thank you, like we said in the letter, to residents. You were here from when I first got involved in volunteering in 2010. You were the Assistant Town Engineer and the Town Engineer, and a ton of flood mitigation work, building work. When I was on the Board at Wright Lock, you were hugely involved in sort of their stormwater runoff to build the All Seasons Barn. You got to see the train station completed, and you might not have ever thought you'd see the day, but I'm glad that happened, and we're grateful for all your years here in town, and your service as Town Manager, and your work with us when I was on FinCom and you were the engineer, and for everybody who interacted. So thank you.
Thank you.
From me, and we won't do this again on WinCam again, because we'll convene again on camera on the 8th. So I wanted to start off with that, if people have anything more they want to say, and then we'll just go about the rest of our business. But didn't want to lose the opportunity to say thank you officially, and again.
Yep. And I'll just reiterate, reiterate that, and also given the, just, big list of projects that you're talking about in your report tonight, a lot has been done in the past few years with you as Town Manager, and so it's been a lot of, a lot of work, and we really appreciate your work for the town as Town Manager and Town Engineer.
Thank you for your service, and, you know, almost more than two decades, and as Michelle and Anthea both said, a huge number of accomplishments delivered during that time. So thank you for all of your hard work, and I would extend that to Mark and to Meg, who have also served this town for multiple decades, and the terrific work that all three of you did together.
Yeah, likewise. You know, we had the luxury of having such a great team for so many years, and so many, not just big projects done, but very complicated ones. So thank you for your leadership and partnership with that. Appreciate it.
It's been nothing but a pleasure working with you, Beth. You've been with the town long enough that your experience could vote. But you've taken the town through some very difficult and unexpected crises, and we're still going, and that's largely in part to you. I think you've inspired a lot of people, at least myself, to get more involved and try to do better for this town. And so I'll take you as an inspiration going forward, and look forward to working with you as a constituent and not just a town manager. We'll have to answer to you now, instead of you answering to us. So congratulations, the tables are now officially turned.
She's going to show up at public comment on September 8th, just to...
She has all our numbers. That's a good point, Bill.
We joke, Beth, but your experience cannot be overvalued, and I hope you have a very loud voice going forward.
Yes. Please. Yeah. Tell us as a resident, and we wish you all the best, and wherever you land next, they'll be lucky to have you. So, okay. Might say this once more at the end of the meeting, but we can move on now, I suppose, to business, but didn't want the moment to pass. Thanks for that report, Beth. Okay. The next item in our business agenda, still no public comment, there's very few people in the audience, so we will take up the consideration of an appeal related to property at 176 Dothen Street. That's going to dial in Jay.
Is the individual making the appeal present or intending to be present?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Hello?
Hey, Jay, it's Michelle and Beth on the Board, and we are just, we have not even started the 176 Dothen Street, the appeal. So I'm going to sort of restate the facts as, I know it in our packet, and if you can perhaps advise the Board on what actions we can take or cannot take at this point. So I think we'll try to leave it high level. We have the minutes of the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals relative to this particular property, and challenges to building in that location, impacts on stormwater and runoff. Zoning Board of Appeals asked the owners to get a peer review at the suggestion of our Town Engineer, and suggested that the owners use Weston, not Weston Sampson, no VHB, Weston Sampson, who is often our stormwater vendor. The owners have written the Select Board appealing that decision, suggesting that it's a conflict because Weston Sampson does so much work with the town. I will, those, I think, are the high-level facts. I'll let Beth, if there's more that you want to sort of sprinkle in from the town perspective, please do, and then, Jay, we might turn it over to you. But go ahead, Beth.
Yeah, no, nothing in particular, just to clarify, when there is a peer review done, that the applicant, the peer review is hired by the town with funds that are supplied by the applicant, so the applicant is not hiring a peer reviewer themselves, but that was the only clarification.
Okay. So, Jay, in cases where a constituent is filing an appeal, this is not an appeal of the zoning board's decision, right? This is an appeal of the specific directive and a conflict of interest. So what is the Select Board's purview here in this specific instance?
Right. So this is pretty straightforward. This is an old statute that was designed to help cities and towns have the means of utilizing expert services when they're presented with reports by experts from an applicant, because the town doesn't have these discretionary budgets to allow a zoning board or planning board or a conservation commissioner or a health to just expend these monies on experts. So what the Commonwealth put in is a process by which the town can choose its experts, and the applicant has to pay for it for matters that are legitimately before the Board. The statute states that it's then the applicant's expense. Procurement doesn't apply to it. The town just has to use just sound judgment in selecting a person. The criteria, if someone objects, would be, well, let me back up a little to go forward. So the Board then develops a scope of what they need reviewed, and they then seek proposals from consultants, or maybe just call a single consultant to get, provide an estimate of what it would cost, and then the applicant is required to deposit funds for that. If the applicant doesn't like that expert, or doesn't think that expert is appropriate, they have the means, under the statute, being a local bylaw, so that, or local guidelines or regulations, or a bylaw, and that statute is Chapter 44, Section 53G. Under that statute, the grounds for appeal are limited to two areas. One, that the expert does not have the requisite expertise. That issue is obviously not present here, because Weston Sampson certainly has the requisite expertise. Or that there's a conflict of interest. An applicant does not have the means of appealing just because they feel that this could have been handled in-house, or that they're not particularly keen on the cost of it. So the only thing the Select Board can measure is those two areas. And here, in particular, the only area that seems to be germane despite lengthier submission is whether or not there's a conflict of interest. I've reviewed the rationale for why there might be a conflict of interest. I'm happy to discuss that with the Board, but that's the limit of what the Board can consider here in terms of an appeal.
Okay. Go ahead, Bill.
Hi, Jay, this is Bill. And if we, if hypothetically, if we did find that there was a conflict of interest, am I correct that all that would do is require the zoning board to choose a different engineering firm to conduct a peer review?
That's correct. It wouldn't deprive the zoning board of appeals from choosing someone else, and I think, you know, I've been involved in this one a little bit for a while, because I was providing advice to, a little to the zoning board of appeals, but more to the engineering department about the scope of their review. So, yeah, they could, they could get another firm to do that, if you did find there was a conflict of interest.
Okay. And just, let's, let's debate. I'm not going to ask for a motion just yet.
I don't consider there to be a conflict of interest here, given that's something I deal with regularly in my professional life. I don't think this rises to a conflict. And even if we found one, I don't think it would have any other large impact other than delaying this project moving forward, because I suspect the zoning board would just select another engineering firm.
Anthea?
I believe that there was feedback from Town Council that this is not a conflict of interest, but if, I'm not a lawyer, so if, Jay, is that, is that something that you could advise us on?
Yeah. So I've only looked at the information supplied by the applicant, and I have some knowledge, obviously, as to what Weston Sampson does for the town. The applicant, as I understand it, has suggested there's a conflict because the town regularly uses Weston Sampson. That's not a conflict. There would have to be a financial interest at stake here that has skewed the selection of Weston Sampson. And I'm not giving advice to Weston Sampson, they have their own council, I'm sure they can do that too. But the mere fact that the town has utilized the same consultant for other municipal projects is certainly not a conflict of interest as we come to understand it under Massachusetts law.
And isn't that what we do with, for instance, VHB and Concom in many circumstances?
Yeah. I mean, we regularly use Weston Sampson, VHB, and other consultants for peer reviews. I think on Washington, Swan Street, VHB, I believe, is the peer reviewer for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll just jump in, sorry if you're going to jump in. Yeah, I think, you know, there's a kind of, there may be a little bit of a gray area between an actual conflict of interest and a perceived one here. Certainly, there is a enormous benefit to Weston Sampson to support the conclusion that the town supports, because we provide them with millions of dollars of business. So if an applicant feels uncomfortable with that, I probably would if I was an applicant, and I'm not. I think extending them the ability to have another one assigned, and maybe we should start looking at that if we're, if we're always using the same peer reviews. This one is substantially more expensive than the initial design, it looks like, that happened from the civil engineer. So I don't know, I don't have a problem with allowing, you know, the applicant to request another peer reviewer on the project. It makes sense to me. I mean, they're investing a lot in a home, and I think anybody that's qualified to do the work can do it, and it makes sense to me that it would be somebody that the town doesn't use on projects on such a regular basis. So that's my perspective on it, and I certainly agree with Bill that there's, there would be, we're not voting on whether or not to do the, you know, the engineering, you know, pursuant to 53G. That, that is going to happen no matter what. That has been, already been decided by the zoning board of appeals, and it's, it's in their lane to do so.
Yeah. And in the realm of how a reasonable person would approach this, I would agree with everything Mike just said. But just to understand our actual authority here, this isn't the Town Engineer or the Town Manager, who are, you know, employees we can give guidance to, who would pick, if we said, hey, can you just pick a different one? The ZBA actually has to do that, right? Who we have virtually no authority over. So the only power, I guess, we have tonight is we have to vote it down, and then the ZBA could pick somebody else. And I'm not, because I think it could create a bad precedent for us if we declared, declared this officially a conflict of interest. I do agree, the appearance isn't... I do agree, the appearance isn't great, this is one of our own residents, I would hope the ZBA, you know, could, could, if this were the town engineer, I would ask him to come to the table right now and say, hey, can you just pick somebody else? But, but given that this is the zoning board of appeals, our only power here is to just say, it is a conflict and I, so I would approach it the reasonable man approach as well, but, but I, you know, the precedent here, to me, it would be concerning to me if we declared this conflict because it would then create, it would show up in other places. So, if we want to give it a week for somebody to have a conversation with the ZBA and say, hey, could you pick somebody else, because the appearance and the way we treat our residents is important, I would support that.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good suggestion, actually.
Go ahead Plato.
Yeah, but I think that's a good, you know, alternative suggestion because I don't think it necessarily matters to the ZBA, you know, who they choose, I think they just go who we usually go with, but I think in the future, it is something that we should visit when we, you know, are identifying certain companies to be using for pursuant to 53G if it's just always the same ones, right? So, I think it, your issue with it setting a precedent, I think is important because I think we have a habit of only using the same people over and over again, so, and I think that if we, we wouldn't have an issue with a conflict of interest if we did use, if the ZBA did refer to a variety of them and they're, it's a peer review, right? So, it's, I think the qualifications to be doing that are, there are a lot of people that are in the market that can be doing the work. So, if we wanted to put a pause and see, I would be happy to do that and if not, then just let it stand.
So, Jay, do we have any, there's nothing we can do short of, we must declare it a conflict to agree with the person who's appealing and say, you don't have to use Weston Sampson, right? We have to declare it a conflict, we can't say, we agree with the person who's, because I tend to agree with the homeowner who's applying for this. Do we have any motion we can take short of declaring a conflict that may or may not exist because of a financial reason, but that we actually think we'd like to encourage the ZBA to find another person to conduct this peer review, which will happen?
Well, I think you have to act on the appeal.
Yep.
So, in, but I think, there's nothing preventing you from taking a motion to suggest to the zoning board that they, you know, might want to choose someone else or at least have some variety of their.
Or let the homeowner choose.
Potential peer review people in the future, but you should.
You can't let the homeowner choose.
I want a peer review.
So, I would be fine if we were to IP this, which I'm not sure applies to this body the way it does to town meeting and to come back.
Continue it.
Yeah, continue it, there you go. In two weeks, we, we just can continue the, the appeal and in that time, we direct the chair of our board to, or a member of our board to, to issue a letter or a phone call to the ZBA chair and say, maybe it'll, this is a resident ultimately, it'll be better for everybody if, if you consider somebody else who everyone's comfortable with.
The 30 day clock started when?
The 11th.
Okay, so we have time before September 8th, our next meeting, our next in-person meeting, to rule on this appeal. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
You're gonna say something.
I think this is a very narrow question and I think the only thing that we are here to resolve is whether or not a conflict of interest exists between Weston Sampson on this project. And I think it is a blatant attempt to, to work around the statute and the charge it gives us here to try to do anything else and I think it also disservices the zoning board. They've made a decision, they've made their recommendation, I think that we should respect them for that, that's why we appoint those people, we give them our trust, we give them that authority. And by drawing this out, I don't think we're doing favors for anybody in decisive action when we have all the facts that we need to make a decision here, we should take it.
We're still within 30 days, you know, and I think the zoning board did their job, I don't know if they care if we, you know, if we ask them to find someone else, I mean, we're not, we're not asking them to not do the peer review, you're right, that it's, we're agreeing with them, we're validating what their recommendation was, we're just saying.
They could also just say, no, no, we're gonna go to Weston Sampson and if they do that, I'm prepared to vote that it is not a conflict. I'm just saying, we have a reasonable conversation.
I think the outcome's the outcome, but if they're willing to do something different, might be worth the ask.
So, I guess the question would be, is the only difference in us waiting until September 8th is that we stall out ZBA, whether they, I mean, if we want time to ask the ZBA to reconsider this, but it seems like strong consensus that this is not a conflict of interest and so, we're not gonna say, yes, we're gonna vote this is a conflict of interest and they have to vote.
We're divided on this question though.
Yeah.
And so, given, rather than take a split vote at this board, is it better to just try to mediate it? We're not a court where we can, we can do this as a discussion, keep everybody reasonably happy. I don't know.
People can make a motion however way they wish.
Fine, I will move that we find that there is no conflict of interest between Weston Sampson and the town for the purpose of this project.
Second. Any additional debate? I'm not gonna vote in favor of that right now, I'm gonna abstain, but that's the motion and it has a second, so. Okay, all those in favor of declaring that there's no conflict this evening?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed?
Nay.
Nay, okay.
How did you vote?
I voted no. So, it's three to two.
Three to two.
Oh, I was abstained, but I decided to vote no.
I would like to make a second motion. Go ahead Anthony.
Nope, go ahead.
I'd like to move that notwithstanding the fact that from a statutory perspective, we do not deem this a conflict of interest, we ask the chair of the select board or her designate to have a conversation or in email communication with the chair of the zoning board of appeals in order to suggest to them that they consider a different engineering consultant that would be, you know, not somebody who has a substantial economic relationship with the town.
Second.
Okay, additional debate on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Nay.
Nay, four to one. Okay.
I think, you know, maybe having us, you know, have a little bit of a review of what other communities do, what their process is, if they say, here's three, you know, people to choose from that we're recommending under 53G, you know, pick one or work with us, you know, it, it may be that there's, we can find some insight there, it may be that there isn't and this is just how everyone does it, I just, I don't have visibility to it, but it would be, be helpful for us to have that information.
Okay.
Jay, do they have to vote on the first question about the expertise?
They, they probably should, well, I think they should vote to whether or not they're going to, if they're voting that there is no conflict of interest, they may want to finish it off by saying they reject the appeal just to, just to make sure that there's no debate as to what that motion means.
Okay.
I motion to deny the appeal of the appellant at, was it 176 Dothen Street, raised in contestation of the peer review requested by the zoning board of appeals for the, specifically for the use of Weston Sampson for a peer review. Under 4453G.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm an aye as well, okay. Five oh, thanks Beth for clarifying that. Thank you Jay.
Thank you Jay.
You're welcome, have a good night everybody.
Good night. Okay. Phone is possessed. Next up, capital planning update. Welcome to the table, Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Rinalia.
Thank you very much for having me tonight, I am not Roger McPeak. I liken this to if you went to a Paul Silas concert and Art Garfunkel showed up, I hope I put on a decent concert anyway.
He's a better singer.
He is a better singer.
Yeah. My job here tonight, you should be in receipt of two things, one would be a memo that I know is in the packet, the other should be a letter from the chair that went to you with some questions. So, my job here tonight is to go over our ranking, but also to come asking some questions of you to help give us some guidance as we move forward with the capital cycle this year. And I'm actually gonna open with those questions tonight, I'm not asking for you to answer them as I go, I'm just gonna open them so that as I talk about how we ranked projects this year, you have them in mind. So, the first question I have for you to think about, is there interest in packaging town hall projects for an override at some point? We have between 12 and 15 million dollars worth of projects on the town hall and based on projects we have now and coming up in the VFA database, this is a long-term discussion and something for the state of the town to talk about, but it's something I wanted to open up with that. The second question that I'm coming tonight to ask, is there support in this body for the carriage house demolition? Furthermore, would the select board consider co-sponsoring possibly with the schools? This is more than just a construction demolition project, but a sensitive conversation for the town, somewhat beyond sort of what the capital planning usually argues for on the floor of town meeting. The third question would be, does the board support the culvert, the Everett Ave culvert, even if it might require a taking or an easement? And to that extent, would you consider co-sponsoring that article? Takings and easements are again beyond the capital planning's purview per se, we've actually talked about that and if we don't have that support, we can't go forward because we can't just put that project forward.
Temporary easement, just to clarify.
Well, we don't know what is needed, it's unclear whether it's temporary or permanent, it's not, sort of beyond the purview of the capital planning committee. The fourth question for you all is, is there support for the Sims Corner design? This is $300,000 worth of design work for the 25% plans for Sims Corner, it'll require another $300,000 plus or minus, but we are in line to get as five or six million dollars from the state if we go ahead with this. We usually don't support projects if we don't have funding lined up, so we want to make sure that we'd have your support to go ahead that way. And then the last question, before I get to the projects as ranked by us, is as commissioners of the highways, can you provide us with directions on Lachland and Ridge? That intersection has been sitting in our queue for a long time, it's not a lot to do the engineering, but the project that results from that is multi-million dollars, sort of beyond what we can cover from the capital stabilization fund. So, I ask those five questions as I go through the projects that we have here. So, I want to start by saying that all the projects that we ranked this year and all the ones that we were unable to recommend for funding as well, all are worthy projects. I'm gonna go quickly through this because I could spend an hour going through this and I was told I had 10 minutes and I think I just used up about three, so that gives me about.
Give you some grace.
Seven more minutes.
Not too much.
So, starting with the building stabilization fund, our highest ranked project was the town hall HVAC system. This is our highest ranked project, it's health and safety and comfort of our town employees, it moves us from fossil fuels, it brings the building up to ADA compliance, we cannot fund this from stability funds, so while it's our highest ranked project, we are not recommending funding from the building stabilization fund. The projects we're recommending to fund, the first would be the town hall roof construction and bell tower, this was something from last year, it was an add alternate for a different project that we're unable to fund, however, with closeouts from some other projects, we'll be able to fund that using closeouts, so that's the first project. The second project is the Lincoln School final chiller designing construction for 1.8 million dollars. I should have said the bell tower roof construction is 1.5 million dollars. Along with that is the Lincoln office lower AC unit replacement, which is $400,000. We have, that project alone, although they go together sort of, it's a separate part of the project, has been, I mean, it was highlighted in the CPA report issued to the town before voting as a high priority project that CPA could fund, we've asked them if they would like to collaborate with us on that to some extent, we think it would be a good look before town meeting to have some projects collaborated with. The last project which we are recommending funding is the Winchester High School masonry failure repair, this is design work for $50,000. It will support comprehensive engineering examination, determine what's happening, including mortar joints, capstones, compromised railings, and this assessment will be used to determine what needs to be done. This will be funded from residual funds in the high school project by the EFPBC, but they will not have, they have about $75,000 and this is 50, this will not fund any work beyond that. Three projects we're unable to recommend funding for from the building stabilization fund this year, the town hall window replacement, that's engineering, it's $175,000, that's gonna lead to a two-plus million dollar project. It's one of those projects that we would like you to consider if you were willing to find a way to bundle with a larger project at some point. The Lincoln flatwork construction, it's 1.7 million dollars, we're requesting back to them that they consider a scaled back or phased project because we can't fund 1.7 million dollars, there's parts of it that are more urgent than others and we requested that they consider like just the stairs.
They as a school committee or EFPBC?
They as in, they as in everyone, I don't know. That's a really good question.
Good answer.
School committee, but whoever, you know, usually we deal with Pete Lawson as far as those projects, but ultimately, yes, it was put forward, it was the last ranked project by the school committee put forward, so I think they appreciate that there's a lot of other projects in town. It's been sitting around since when I was on the school committee and before, so it's something that we know needs to get done, but the price tag is just so big that it feels like it's never gonna get done the way it's moving forward, so. And last, but not least, we're unable to fund the town hall carpeting replacement at $250,000, again, something that potentially could be folded into some bigger project. There are lots of carpets that need to be replaced in this building and we can't unfortunately fund it now. For the capital stabilization fund, I'm gonna go a little bit faster because there's smaller numbers, we're recommending to fund the Everett Ave culvert for $600,000, this was from last year, it got pushed over to this year because of potential takings or easements and hopefully this will be actually a standalone article ideally at town meeting so that we can have support from, so it's not just us going through it. Fire truck, we have 2.8 million dollars worth of fire truck equipment that we need to buy in the next two years, last year we put aside half a million dollars to, so that we could buy engine four next year, so later on, you see, we put another half a million dollars away toward that. Just seemed like good planning, capital planning, we don't always get to plan, this was an opportunity to actually do planning, not just capital reaction committee, so we're happy to be able to do that. The ADA transition plan, this is the 10-year plan that we've been doing for, I don't know how many years now, it's way more than 10, they were asking for $240,000. The reason for that was additional funds to bring the town hall into ADA compliance, again, we're asking that you consider whether that could be folded into some larger project. Library and public safety building, fuel tank removal for $100,000, just has to happen. Roads and sidewalks, they were asking for $550,000, we broke it up into two asks, one for $350,000, which we are supporting, and then the $200,000 comes later and when I get down there, I'll have a story for you, so that'll be better, that's good news down there.
So, net of, I'm gonna ask you this question until I was asking now, net of the ask, the supplemental, the increase in the chapter 90 funding, it would be good to understand where we were with sidewalks last year and roads and sidewalks and where we're gonna be this year.
So, I don't know what the chapter one, help me, remind me the chapter for roads and sidewalks.
Chapter 90.
Chapter 90.
You ran half a million a year.
Half a million a year, and this year we're gonna get about $400,000 more, we were told, so, thank you for the help.
Did you have a?
What?
Yeah, chapter 90, it's a five.
So, what's gonna happen this year is that we're recommending $350,000, we are not, we had originally recommended also an additional $200,000 to bring them to the full $550,000 allotment from the town. Because they are getting an extra $400,000, we removed that extra $200,000 allotment and got three and a half additional projects done, they will end up with $200,000 more than they, more than they would have received even if we had given them the full 550. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, the 400 Yeah, so basically the $400,000 English from chapter 90, you took 200 back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. Makes sense. So another, so this year, we put aside another $500,000 for the fire truck so that next year, we can actually go ahead and buy it. By the way, the fire trucks get fast, expensive very fast. Ambrose School pedestrian walkway needs repairs for $50,000. The Sims Corner, 25% design for $300,000. We talked about that a little bit. The next thing on the list is the carriage house abatement and demolition. Again, we're going to ask for co-sponsor with the school committee, potentially with you, the select board. Again, stand, potentially a standalone article. It's a sensitive project. We spoke to the roads and sidewalks supplemental that has, what we had voted $200,000, but then when we got the additional money, we removed that. Kenwin Road construction, $150,000. I believe you're all well aware of that.
That's the discussion we had about the chicanes.
Traffic calming on Kenwin Road, yes. It's the, whatever you call it.
Chicanes.
Chicanes, yeah. Facilities aerial lift vehicle. This is needed for our electricians to get up into poles. Next vehicle is a highway, cemetery backhoe. This will be $140,000, 70 from the cemetery trust fund, 70 from the capital stabilization fund. Risk assessment, this is from the police department. Risk assessment is a terrible name. It's not really the assessment. The assessment has been done. This is for looking at the recreation department, Mystic, to install camera systems, doorway entry systems, lighting. And then we're slowly working around the towns around building to have identical software and hardware security systems so that the police can know what they're seeing from each of the different buildings. So we expect to see other buildings in the future, future years. Highway one ton dump truck for $100,000. That's a truck. I don't know what, what you're.
Eloquent description, Brian. We're going to hold you to that.
It is. The Mystic Playground upgrades, this is a $200,000 project. But we are being asked for $50,000 from Recreation Department. This is for shade structures, water filling station and water feature. Apparently $150,000 is coming from a recreation grant. And this will need approval from the school committee. They have not yet approved this because Mystic is a school building.
Can you pause on that one? Is, because the future of Mystic is always up in the air, it seems, do we know when the school committee is currently expecting their facilities plan to come in?
I do not know.
Okay.
I know that they are, put it out to bid the.
It's in the process of selecting the consultant, so it's, it's going to be a while.
Yeah.
To be clear, this is just, you need their approval as the care and custody.
Yes, care and custody of the ability.
Because it's CSF and Rec Department Enterprise Fund.
Yeah, yeah, they don't need to approve the funds, but any work that takes place there, just like if you want to fix heating or air conditioning system there, as I'm sure you're well aware, you need their approval for that. So this would be similar to that. Voting machine replacements, they are starting to fail. We can get a good deal if we buy them now. There's a, some sort of package deal that Mary Ellen was telling us about. If we buy them now, they'll be more expensive if we wait. That's where we stopped, the last thing we were able to fund until we were able to remove the $200,000 from roads and sidewalks because of the boost. So we were able to do the bathroom door work and lock system for Gin and McDonald Field. These are doors that, and locks that have failed. Apparently Kit was actually trapped in one of these buildings bathrooms for about 20 minutes till they came down and got it open. So this is very important work that has to happen. Taser replacements, ours are old and need to be upgraded. Health Department vehicle replacement, this is an old vehicle that's also failing, needs to be replaced. Then that left us with $60,000 left in the capital stabilization fund. So we, there's the backstop fence work for the Parks and Fields, which is a $111,000 project that's also being submitted to the WCCP. So given that we had $60,000 left in the capital stabilization fund, we reached out to them and we have not heard because they haven't finalized their voting, if they'd be willing to put $51,000 towards that project, which is coming for them. Another project that we could potentially collaborate on and get that work done for $111,000. We are funding already the Mystic Playground upgrades and the Gin and McDonald bathrooms, which are both things that are going to the WCCP. So we've taken two things off their plate. We're hoping that they'll help us with that. I could go through all the things we're unable to recommend funding. The Ridge and Lachland design, I'm just going to go quick. We spoke about that. Relatively cheap money, except it leads to a large multimillion dollar project, so we're hoping to get some guidance on if there's another way to do this other than what we're sort of thinking, which is totally doing the intersection over to make it safer. Traffic calming studies were, were studies for Park Ave and Palmer Street corridors. Gin pickleball courts, that's actually, number's been revised down to $40,000. That's actually just engineering work. It's also going to the WCCP for request. The Gin outfield sodding, unable to fund. Space needs study is actually for the town hall clerk. She doesn't have enough space to store the documents that she's required to keep. Potentially part of a, again, as we look at this, as potentially part of a bundle, if you guys go that way. Winter pond work, continuing implementation recommendations from a 2021 study. COA is in need of a bus. In the next few years, we didn't think it was needed this year. It will be needed in the next few years. District fiber optic in town for the school, this is to map out the piecewise fiber optic system we have through town, which is right now been put in like one wire at a time and really we don't know what's happening with it exactly. And if at some point something actually were to fail, it would take a lot of work. So would be helpful to have this mapped out, but it is working at the moment. And then last is the DPW concrete floor covering for $100,000, something again, we can't fund. Just need to repair that. If we do it sooner, it will last longer. If we wait longer, the DPW concrete floor may fail. Fail is not the right word. May require more extensive repairs. Quickly, water and sewer retained earnings. We are recommending to fund water infiltration, software hardware upgrade. This was actually recommended to fund last year. It turned out that we didn't have enough money in retained earnings to fund it and we've been told that we need to actually vote it again this year to do it. So this is a project that's already gone through all the vetting, just needs to get done again. MS4 permit for $200,000. This is to fund the consultant work. New permit, you've seen this before. This is not a new, new work. Wildwood Road pressure reducing valve, this is to, I'm not a water engineer. This is to reduce the pressure from the high system to the low system so you don't get high pressure coming down. This is exceeded its lifespan and it would be a comprehensive redesign and this would be a borrowing through chapter 110. The contact tank cleaning, this holds clean filtered water, the water that we drink. And it's time to clean it. You have to clean it every once in a while. We drink this water. We have to clean it. The INI infiltration and inflow east side phase two design. This is mapping everywhere so that we can then proceed to decide what the high priority work areas are. Lastly, but not leastly, recreation retained earnings, recreation retain, actually has larger and larger retained earnings and we are going to see that as a new funding source for some recreation projects over time. And we're recommending a replacement of a vehicle for $53,000. That was a lot and I'm open for questions. Art Garfunkel, not Paul Simon, just remember that when you ask the questions.
So all in, how much are you spending from these two? 3.7 from building and how much from capital stabilization?
It's three, it's not 3.7 from, oh, it is because we're, no, it's not because it's more like it's two because it's not including the funding from the closeouts on the roof hall construction. So it's 2.2 and it's three point. I wrote it down. I believe it's 3.5. I believe it's 2.2 and 3.5.
Okay.
It's actually a good year. We're getting a lot of work done this year. And as far as some years, I feel like we made it further down the list this year. A lot of them are smaller projects, so that's, that's the advantage, but.
But they seem like necessary projects.
Yes.
A lot of them have been on the list.
Yeah, for a long time.
The Lincoln HVAC is been on the list for.
For a long time.
Should, are we, should we try to address some of the questions the committee has posed to us?
We'll go back to, I think those questions, I just want to ask some questions generally on the list and then I do want to take off those five questions. And perhaps not in the same order that they're written, Paris, but we'll go back to what we can resolve tonight.
And I will say that obviously when these, you will see these again as we get closer. This is, I really should have added one last thing. This is still a work in progress. This is where we are as of our meeting.
Last week.
Last week. So if we all of a sudden discover there's more money, maybe we go down to another project. If we discover there's less money, maybe a project gets cut off the bottom.
But these questions remain.
Yes, the questions remain.
Okay.
So would it just be if for some reason there is an excess $200,000 lying around it? Are, are the ones in the unable to recommend, are those kind of ranked, I guess?
Roughly in the order.
Dollar values, but.
Roughly in the order that we would move forward. I guess I would say that we, I can't speak for the, I don't want to speak for the committee as how we would vote. We would be unlikely to vote Ridge and Lachland Street until we get some, because that's one of the issues that we have. Really, what are we going to do? We funded that and then we have a 2.2 million dollar project that we can't fund. You know, sometimes it's said, do we have the policy? We don't have policies, but we do tend to try to be practical. Don't fund something that we can't then fund later on.
Any questions or comments for Brian? Because then we can take up the questions, the five things we're supposed to consider, so.
Just because you keep bringing it up and it ties into one of the others, when it comes to Ridge and Lachland, is there any likelihood that it ever be avail, open for the same funding that Sims Corner might be able to access?
I'm going to turn that way.
Yeah, I mean, so we, for several years, we had gotten multiple projects funded through the tip. And then we kind of took a break because they usually spread the money around geographically.
Sure.
So with Sims Corner being found to be not program insight, but it is a tip eligible project, we could go through the same process with the state to see if the Lachland Ridge project would be tip eligible. Again, it's.
It's a multi-year process?
Multi-year process, yeah.
And we've been selective to make sure we're.
Yeah, and you have to, the town still has to pay for the, the engineering work as well as any right of way. So if there are temporary or permanent easements or even takings, we have to pay for those, even though the state funds the construction piece of it.
I remember all that. Just didn't know if.
Yeah. And I mean, I'm happy just because as town engineer, I put this project on the list probably 10 plus years ago. The 110,000 is not like an engineering study. It's really to look at concepts, right? Because I think there's a lot of different things that could happen out there as well as to do a survey. There's a lot of utilities in the ground out there that will help kind of dictate what can be done out there. So I think if the board's considering, you know, that funding, it's really, it is quite possible it could lead to a multimillion dollar project, right? If that whole intersection was reconfigured. But it could lead to a smaller project as you've, as you said, right? But we really need that first initial analysis to, to really get the survey done, to lay out some options, to talk to stakeholders in that area, the fire department, the Wright Lock Farm, and use sports groups to say like, how do we use this area? And how can we make that connection from the farm to the field better so that people feel safer going, you know, pedestrians feel safer walking back and forth. So that 110 is not 100% engineering plans, right? It's, it's concept level plans with some, with some discussions about what, what everybody wants it to look like.
Okay.
It's a crazy intersection trying to turn left.
It's a very different, difficult intersection for sure, yeah.
Yeah, but that's all really good context to understand why it is where it is in your ranking. I mean, everything else seems to be, again, very focused on safety or necessary upkeep or getting something done now while we can afford it before it becomes more expensive.
Is there, I hate to ask this because you're going to say, no, of course not. So yeah, I give you.
Of course not.
In looking at capital stabilization funds and talking about how, you know, whether this, this would, or would it be on there? Is there a typical kind of balance or ratio of these projects are road and safety, these are trucks? Is, is there kind of an assessment of what's done each year in different buckets of work under CSF? Or is it, you know, we've had these projects, things have not been able to make it on, they finally reached priority and, and it's not.
Well, it's a great question. It's extraordinarily difficult question to say which is more important, a new fire truck or replacing a boiler or a new roof? I mean, like.
Right, if something is failing, we need to.
Or fixing the locks on a building that people can't, you know, get trapped into. We take them each year based on, I mean, without going through the whole, going through how the whole process works, which I know you're aware of how it works. We just take the projects and look at them and try to prioritize them as they are right now. A project can be on the list for a long time and still not make it. It's not a matter of if you've been, you've sat there for seven years, you get it. Look at the Lincoln flatwork. Again, I was doing that five years ago and I think they were doing it five years before that. It just, it has not risen enough because of the price tag and because of the other things on the list. So there's not necessarily a, we need to make sure we get half a million. It's not like the CPA where there's buckets that you have to spend from. It's prioritized based on, on what we see at the table and what the members see.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's a great question, but it's not.
So no, of course not was the appropriate answer. I guess I would just think about this, like, we know traffic is, is high priority and, you know, more and more, there's an appetite for traffic and pedestrian safety and, you know, do we at some point start to think of how we direct things to flow towards? Like we, we have these intersections, we have our traffic study that was done, like.
Specific goals.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was the, when we funded the traffic master plan several years ago, that was the goal, right? Was to identify the suite of needs that we have in the town and then figure out, because we, we really aren't able to fund that, those projects through the capital process, right? Because it will suck the life out of every other capital need that we have. So do we need to have a separate funding source? Do we need to provide some additional funding to the stabilization fund to be able to support additional traffic projects? Because I mean, I'll certainly say as a longtime staff member, the feedback that we get from residents, the community is a strong desire to make our streets and sidewalks safer for people. So I think that's a conversation that should be had as part of the state of the town is how do we, how do we prioritize those needs that we've heard from residents are a key thing for them?
I guess I would just add that this year, we are recommending funding to Sims Corner design work. Recommending funding to the Kenwin Road construction. We originally recommended additional funding for roads and sidewalks that we pulled back on because we're getting extra state money. I mean, this is a priority to the board, the capital planning committee as well. But it's not sort of saying that we have to have half a million dollars of bucket, in that bucket, although actually if you add those up, it probably gets close to that.
Yeah, well, you get the Ambrose entrance too.
Yeah, you could throw Everett Avenue on there too.
Yeah.
So I'm just, it's a little after nine. I want to just be mindful, we'll meet again, Brian. Select Board meets again September 8th. Warrant closes on September 19th. So you would certainly want to know from Select Board's perspective, cosponsorship at our meeting on the 8th.
Yeah.
Right? Because the warrant needs to go out there with.
On the 13th or something like.
19th.
19th.
19th. So maybe we start with cosponsorship as our questions and we, maybe we have some interest in, you know, and maybe we talk about Sims Corner as well, whether or not this group has a clear, you know, immediate answer on packaging up town hall projects and or Lachland Ridge. Let's just take that up last. But let's start with your question number two, which is carriage house demolition. Is there support for the carriage house demolition, which it was two parts? And, and would the select board wish to co-sponsor that if it's a standalone article? So let's put that out to the board. Is there support for carriage house demolition? And if we want to sort of socialize that support in a meaningful way, would we wish to co-sponsor with school committee or make some other statement? So I'll put that out there for debate.
I would be comfortable co-sponsoring this with the school committee and also with the capital planning committee. Yeah, so it'd be with both of them. I think there was some conversation about, from, from the historical commission around whether the school committee potentially was the right applicant on the demolition permit. And I spoke about that with the, actually with the school committee who presented with, with your chair who was there, I believe you were there, right? Yeah. And, and so while both town council and school committees council has both made it clear that school committee as the care and control entity is able to sign it, I think this just makes it very. I think this just makes it very clear that the Select Board is also supportive of that as, as the other, you know, body that could in theory have care and control if they were to access to us. You know, we could in theory have care and control, but that, that we have the same policy goal that they do, at least, at least I have the same policy goal that they do. The other, the other point I'll make is that at the State of the Town table, which of course is this table, a lot of people, myself included, but I believe a majority of the board and all of the FinCom representatives have been encouraging the school committee to make hard decisions around their asset base. And this is, in my judgment, an example of them doing that. And they're going to have a lot of their hard judgments, they're going to have to make harder judgments. And I think it's important that we stand with them, you know, in front of town meeting, especially because this is a good example of the Select Board potentially, but also the school committee and, and at least the representatives of the Finance Committee, including their chair who's there, encouraging them to go down a certain direction and they've done it. And I, and I think it says something for us to stand with them.
Anybody disagree with that?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree with all that and just, I think when it comes to the Carriage House, that was put before Town Meeting in Spring '22 with the idea of renovating it for the price of maybe, I don't know, six million?
Six million.
And that was my first Town Meeting and I remember that being very strongly voted down by Town Meeting. And if there was no appetite then to spend $6 million to renovate that building, I'm very skeptical there'd be any appetite, more appetite now to spend more? And so, kind of like what Paris said there, action kind of needs to be taken. And I respect that other people would love to save the building. I would too, I just don't see it being feasible at this time. And it's creating a drain on the town because of that. So I'd be comfortable co-sponsoring for all the reasons he said, all the reasons I said, and I think the reasons you guys are going to share.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think I've said several times, but my mother used to work in the Carriage House building about 25 years ago. So I'm longer than that because I remember being a very small child and playing there. But, you know, it's unfortunate that it, over, since it was closed, hasn't been maintained and has come to the point where it's, you know, demolition versus major project construction just to get it habitable again. So I do support that. I know that there's a presentation done at the Historical Commission from the school committee and I wonder if that can be shared with us, just not as a decision-making point, but to have access to that.
Just to see it, so are you prepared?
I think that was the school committee's.
They had an actual deck, you're saying, or he, oh, I didn't realize that.
So Anthea, would you be prepared, if someone made a motion to co-sponsor this evening, would you be prepared to, to vote on that? Or do you want to wait until the 8th to make that vote?
I'm happy to vote on that tonight. If we wait till the 8th, I can show you a picture of me on the little.
I'm sure that's what, bring it anyway.
I don't think that's going to make or break.
As, as much as I'd love to see that photo, I would, I would be willing to vote on it anyway.
I can still see the picture, okay.
Yeah, the only other thing I would say, Michelle, you know, I, I think that there are a lot of folks that would love to preserve this building. I think we all would. We've heard from the Historical Society that maintains the Sandborne House that they want the investment to continue to go towards maintaining the house, not money going into the Carriage House, which, you know, is essentially the, the garage for the, for the main house, right?
Sandborne House.
Yeah, for the Sandborne House, for lack of a better way to say it. And so, you know, it's tough. I think there's been a lot of interest, but, you know, over the past 20 years, since this has been considered no money, right? Nobody's been able to raise private money. The state hasn't wanted to be involved either. And CPA funds wouldn't be accessible for it because it's not an occupied building currently. So there, there aren't a lot of places to go. And as Paris was saying, that, you know, we have a lot of assets that need to be maintained. And as we heard from the.
Yeah.
From, from Brian's run through, there's, there's a lot there. So, so yeah, I'm ready to go on it.
Okay, so let's take the motion tonight then.
Can I say one more thing? I, I, I think this is a clear co-sponsorship and it sounds like we're 5-0 on that. If, if, if we think it's important, and I'll, and I'll ask, I'm not sure who I'll ask. I mean, Brian, you were the only one there, it sounds like in the room. If, if there's any question in the minds of the Historical Commission or anyone else that the school committee was the proper applicant on the demolition permit, I'd also be comfortable with the Select Board issuing a letter saying, saying.
Ratifying it?
Ratifying it, exactly, yeah. And now, two sets of lawyers told them that, but it seems like it's still a question.
But that's two motions then.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask that as a question to this board first. Do we need to do that? Because I'm happy to.
I think it would be helpful.
There's no harm.
Okay.
It's either going to, either it achieves what needs to be done or it's a useless motion.
Yeah.
I would point out that the demolition permit for the Lynch School was signed by Dr. Hackett. So by the school, not by, not by Beth.
Which is why two sets of lawyers have come to that exact conclusion. I agree with you, but it remained, I believe, an open question despite that, that being observed.
Okay.
It's two.
Two, two motions. So I think one motion would be that we would vote to co-sponsor the, the, you know, okay. So I would move that the Select Board co-sponsor the article to demolish the Carriage House at Fall Town Meeting 2025 with the Capital Planning Committee and the school committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay.
I would further move that we ask our chair to issue a letter on Select Board letterhead under our signature or all of our signatures to the Historical Commission stating that we believe the school committee has the proper care and control on behalf of the town of the Carriage House and therefore is the proper applicant on the demolition permit. And if there's any question about whether the Select Board would have come to the same conclusion about, you know, putting forward a demolition permit to the Buildings Department, the answer is that we would have. It's quite a motion.
You're just going to have to watch the recording.
Please, that I know, okay.
Put down the time.
I can.
Nine, 10 p.m. In super slow mo, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's one answer for capital planning. Next up, with, does the board support Everett Ave culvert even may require a taking? So you expect to have an article at Fall Town Meeting, right?
So that is a good question, whether it will be at Fall Town Meeting or Spring Town Meeting. I believe Fall Town Meeting is.
It'll be ready for fall.
It'll be ready for fall. We, none of these have, we haven't really discussed fall or spring on these yet because it, we're still working on that, but.
Okay.
So we have the appraisals done. We've been working with Town Council and we've, the appraiser is contacted. So just for background information, the, the, there is a stream that goes underneath Everett Ave. There's a culvert under Everett Ave. The culvert within the right of way is on town property, but on either side is on private property. So there typically, like, the, the stream would be town property, but that was not the case for whatever reason. So in the course of the engineering work for the project that was determined. So working with VHB, they have laid out the space that we would need for temporary and permanent easements. It's fairly minor, all told. And so we have appraised values for those temporary and permanent easements. And we have met with or notified all four impacted abutters.
So is this one, and I mean, I think, I just wonder if this is, we want to wait till the 8th for this one reason, which is the repair is capital planning, the taking is Select Board. I don't know if I'm in a position right now to co-sponsor something without seeing a little bit more of the detail. I know what some of the details are in the appraisals and I know who some of the neighbors are. I'm not sure the rest of the board does. So there's the repair and the work to do the infrastructure improvement. But if we need to do the taking, I wonder if, if Select Board wants to wait and get a little more detail for our September 8th packet. That's just me.
Can I add one detail?
Of course, you may.
We have up until Town Meeting to withdraw this motion, but we can't proceed obviously without your support. It just doesn't have to happen now. It has to move forward, but without your support to move forward on this, you know, it's a project that we can't.
You mean now or, or September 8th is still fine because the warrant?
September 8th is still fine. In fact, we could probably even move forward after that and.
Up until Town Meeting.
Yeah.
I'm fine, and, and because it's a taking, we can review that in executive session, is that right?
So the way, the way, we have to have the option to have a taking, right? So.
Sure.
A taking just means that we're still paying just compensation, right? Hopefully we can negotiate it through an easement.
There's still some negotiations happening, yeah.
Easement documents that we can, you know, work with the abutters on. Otherwise, the board will be asked and you'll get the authority from Town Meeting and the board would do an order of taking. But there's still compensation.
Yeah, of course. You can, you can stake it under eminent domain. I, I'm fine delaying this one. I would, I would broadly signal support for trying to get this project done and using various, you know, approaches up to and including a taking to the CPC as one Select Board member. But I would, I would just, you know, caveat that with, I agree, seeing more information would be important.
I would just add that this is a project that's been on the list for a couple of years now. It's unidentified deficiencies. If the project is continued to be delayed, we'll just have to incur continued inspection costs. And at some point, you know, it'll be an emergency condition or worse, right? So it just, you know, obviously there are some details to be worked out on the access side to be able to get in and do the work with the temporary and permanent easements, but it benefits the community to complete this work soon.
But we don't need to vote on a taking tonight, given that we're not quite.
No, no, I'm just saying in terms of like pushing this off to spring or next, whatever.
So I think what CPC needs from us tonight then is more of a broad signal, is that?
Of support.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
For me, you have that.
And ultimately would be helpful to be co-sponsored because we're not going to be able to stand up there to speak to any easements as easily as if you guys could, but.
As the Commissioners of the Streets supporting our town engineer and town management on this one, I would be.
Okay. So then sticking with streets then, Sims Corner Design.
Basically, do you support us spending $300,000 this year, potentially $300,000 in the future for an expectation, but not a promise of a significant funding from the state?
It sounds like they always fund it from Roger McFix email.
Yes.
It's just a matter of.
Almost.
How, how, how long you're willing to wait. But I think eventually you'll get.
As long as Sims Corner's there, we'll wait.
I think the answer is yes.
You do have to be at a certain point in engineering before they'll program you because you have to have the right of way in place in a certain timeframe.
I tend to agree with Bill, the answer is, let's, let's make sure we all five agree with that. We did get a presentation within the last 12 months on Sims Corner Design. So you're not asking for co-sponsorship, correct? This is just being the suite, the list of motions? Okay, so Mike, are you in favor of that Sims Corner, spending money on Sims Corner redesign?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, thank you for that. For a game show.
I think for, also for anyone watching, I mean, we have an email from the Capital Planning Chair and Beth, you, you can speak to this because it's quoting you, which says, "Staff have said they have never seen an instance where the state hasn't funded a project under this program."
Yeah.
That, to me is.
It takes 15 years, but, but eventually you'll get there.
But once we have the study done, we have it done. It's only going to get more expensive.
Does it usually take 10 plus years or? No, right?
It's hard to say, right?
I just hope she's not scaring you with that truth.
The experience we had on the bikeway project, there was, it was multiple communities. It was, there were lots of right of way issues. This is obviously a much more straightforward project than.
Land within our town.
Two other projects the town has had funded through the tip project.
And Anthea to make it officially five.
Very clear, yes.
Okay, good, so we got that.
I cross that street a lot.
Town Hall projects for an override.
That's, please think about it.
State of the town, right, I think?
Are you asking, just to understand your question, are you asking, should we package them for an exclusion?
We are asking for a way to fund these projects. One is the HVAC system in this building.
No, I, I hear, but, but instead of going to the projects, an override.
To be an override, it could be an operating override.
Infusion of cash into the fund.
Cash that would cover the debt service for a, a collection of projects. It is funding for those projects however the town can find a way to fund them. It could be a debt exclusion for eight projects defined, or it could be for the Town Hall to do these projects.
So we can kick this to the State of the Town table, which is probably, but, but I would just say that packaging individual projects is really an exclusion conversation. If we put capital dollars on an override basis into the stabilization funds, that's largely your choice of what you fund then.
Yep.
I just want to be, I just want to be clear on that, right? So the way it's written, we wouldn't package for an override, we would package for an exclusion or we would put money, as they did in 2019, into the stabilization funds and then it's really CPC's choice.
We aren't partial to how these projects get funded. We just simply can't fund them. And if we look at, the reason, the reason I was going to back up a little bit is we're looking at the HVAC system and we're looking at the windows. So we're looking at clearing people out of a room, doing the HVAC system, moving them back in, potentially another project clearing them out to get the windows done, moving them back in. We'd like to be able to do them as some sort of packaged way. What that looks like, we don't know. We know we can't afford most of those projects and, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I know that the town manager is aware of all this and has been aware for, you know, these things are longstanding issues. So a debt exclusion is, is certainly a way to do it or an infusion. We've done it before where we've done infusion of cash for particular projects where we basically, for the, the Lynch traffic calming, that was just money into, with the understanding from Town Meeting, that's what the money was doing.
The construction of Ambrose was.
And we had, and we had to follow, I mean, we weren't required to, but we had.
Yeah, okay, we're clear.
Okay, and then the last, I think, Lockland Ridge. I think we could probably all use a little more information, maybe from the engineers or capital on what that, what's been considered, what's out there. So maybe put that in the package for the 8th, but go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the update, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Appreciate it, thanks for your patience. Thank you, Madam Comptroller, for your patience. If you could come on up and let's talk about PERAC and actuarial updates. Nothing's, nothing's riveting like actuarial evaluations, so.
At 9:20.
What's up?
At 9:20.
Two wins in a row. Good evening, I'm here with Karen Manchuso. I'm not sure if all of you remember Karen. She served as the retirement administrator for about 17 years and we're lucky to have her on the retirement board after she retired. So hello to Karen.
Thank you for being here.
She's here as a representative with me to make sure that I don't forget anything important, but. I do, I rush. I sent everyone here the email that has a bunch of information. I hope it wasn't too much information, but the board is faced with making decisions, the retirement board, every two years when we have our actuarial study done. And we have to choose a funding table. And I personally don't like to choose a funding table for the retirement board as, as one representative of the board without talking to the Select Board and the Finance Committee and Town Management before we make a decision. So the funding table is up to the retirement board. So we could choose anything that we wanted to and not even consult with those parties that are involved. But I'm here tonight again for, I don't know, I've been here for 12 years and we've done this every two years. We'll probably end up doing them every year now that we're close to being funded, which will be an added cost to the budget for the retirement board. But since we're in the 90s, I think 94% funded, we really need to kind of look at it annually and not be surprised every two years if we're, if we have to make up some money, which usually is because of the market, the volatility. But what I presented was the letter from PERAC, which he, John Borack. PERAC does our actuarial study. If we decide to do annual, which I believe we will, we can no longer use PERAC, so we'll have to pay for that service. They provide the service free. We've taken advantage of that as long as we can, I think. With the annual reviews, PERAC can't keep up with that business. So we're going to end up most likely going with a third party, well, with another party. There's several actuaries out there that do these studies, including the OPEB actuarial, who does the OPEB analysis.
Odyssey.
Parker, yeah, Odyssey, Parker, Parker Elmore, yeah. But with that said, we have, I'll just give you a really brief, I'm sure you read this. It just goes over the plan, experience, our gains, our losses, the net liability that we're looking at, which, which we have to fund. We have plenty of time to fund it. We're in a good position. We've been focusing on getting it funded as soon as possible. 2027 has been the target as our, as our last funding year. We have until 2040, I believe. I don't think they've extended beyond 2040, not yet. I say yet because you never know. So right now, our unfunded actuarial liability is 8.2 million. That's down from 13 million a couple of years ago. So we're 95.8% funded. So that's good news. I think we were expecting good news like that. And the funding tables that Mr. Borack provided, they had to be updated. So in the letter, they were updated because we made some changes for our net 38Cs. He had a high amount that wasn't, it wasn't the actual amount that we would be paying. So disregard the alternatives in the packet, in the letter. I provided item number two. He had updated the funding tables based on and adjusted net 38C. And 38Cs, what that means is if we have retirees that retired from us but worked many years in a different system, that other system will pay us for their portion of the retirement. And the same with us. If I left and I worked one year in another system, we would pay for the proportion that I worked here in the other system. So this is the net amount that we pay out every year. So this is the net amount that we pay out every year. We happen to have like a bunch of makeup payments to the state, which was this $300,000 in the first round, which was a one-time thing. So anyway, there's three alternatives here. One is to keep with a 5% increase from '26 to '27. And that's sort of what we've been doing the last few years, is just keep it 5%, aim for that '20, '27, and call it a day. This first one shows that we're going to not quite be fully funded in '27. We still have an $87,000 amortization. So that was just a little tweak that if we kept at 5%, we'd have to pay 87,000 for the amortization in '28 in addition to the normal cost. So our total cost would be 3.6 million. I asked him if he could run that, just bury that 87,000 in for FY '27 instead of pushing it to '28. And that's the second one, which is alternative 2A. I'm sorry, I'm lying to you. That's 3A. So he buried it in FY '27. So the increase in cost isn't 5%, it's 6.09. So that's the difference between 1A and 3A. Now here's the fun part. We want and have been aiming to be 100% funded since this rule came into play where we have to fund the table. PRAAC now wants, and I've heard, I've not received an official notice, that they would like systems to be 120% funded before they start, before we start thinking about shifting money around. But every, I would say, most systems in the, I was going to say in the United States, in Massachusetts are going for this 100 because they have this other big looming liability that they have to manage as well, this fun OPEB liability. So I told him that I doubt we're going to go with this alternative 2A because that gives us, we're putting more money away up through 2032 just to build a reserve. Now, we can do that on our own and not have it in a table where it's required, or we can stick with the required and forget about our pension windfall for OPEB because we have to fund this first. This is required by law. So I said, I doubt we're going to do this because we have a policy in place that we're going to look at these two liabilities combined. We're never going to lose sight of the pension. We're going to grow this total liability by 5%. That's sort of what has been discussed. There's nothing sort of in writing that says it's going to grow at 5%, but I think that's been the normal growth over the last few years anyway. And he said, okay, I'm okay with you going with alternative 1A or 3A in this instance. But I know they'd be way more comfortable if we just kept pushing money in as a required contribution versus just our own policy.
But that, but that's because their job is to look at the pension only, not to look at both liabilities together, right?
Exactly. Perfect. Yep. They're advocating, advocating for us to have enough money for a rainy day if something happens.
Right. But only on their liability, right? That the other liability is still there. And we're not, I understand the view that we shouldn't take the money and divert it entirely from our liabilities, but if our select board policy and our whole practice has been the idea that we're flipping it into the other liability, it does, it does change the, and Moody's certainly looks at both.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Yeah, they are looking at the eyes of the pension only, and they know about the OPEB, they know communities are waiting for this windfall. They're just, they're just nervous that the minute the pension's not paid for, they're going to forget about OPEB.
And they're going to put it in operating.
And focus on the school department or other, I'm just picking on the school.
Whatever. They're going to divert it away from liabilities, right? And I think that's the, you know, you could certainly go above 100%, but the idea of going to 120 when OPEB is at, you know, eight.
One.
Yeah, well, exactly. It just seems strange, especially because if you look at our peer communities, we've talked about the State of the Town table, we're the highest funded PRAAC. And I think of our AAA's, the lowest funded on OPEB. And that's because we've done it in that sequence.
Yes.
But we just, it would be stranger than just keep going.
And yes, and we know.
Going beyond.
And we have a plan, and he felt better about the fact that we, this is the policy that we're going to look at both combined. We're never going to lose sight of the pension. That's obviously first and foremost. But I'm waiting for the day that OPEB is also going to be required.
Mandated by the state.
Yeah, so.
And I don't think PRAAC is ever going to get 120% ramp from the legislature.
No.
I find that extremely unlikely. So they're going to probably stay at 100, and eventually OPEB is going to be put at 100 or 90. And so to me, that, that would be like, rather than overfund here, we should properly fund and then, and then.
Yeah, yeah. So it's really, it's the retirement board's choice to pick which funding table. They're not mandating us yet to go with an overfunding situation, which is good. They're giving us the flexibility to give our commitment and our, you know, our policy a chance. So I think, I don't think either choice, either the 5% or the 6.09% is really going to be a budget buster. That's sort of what's been in the projection for the last.
That's in the model.
Yeah, exactly.
And you need this decision from us. Do you need it tonight? Do you need it September 8th? Do you need it soon?
We are meeting at the end of August to obtain feedback, but if it doesn't have, we are meeting in September 2. This doesn't have to be done and decided until we get our pension letter. I think, what did he say, November? Yeah, so we still have time.
Okay.
But what's our, what's our actual policy? Because the main policy lever we have is the guidance the select board would give town manager in the preparation of the budget, right? What else are we doing here?
Yeah, that's, for pension, that's all you have the authority to do.
That's our, that's our only authority. And it's town meeting members that can vote, right?
As the ex officio member of the board and the select board also has their own selective member, who's the Assistant Comptroller, Michael Lucas, I've, I'm giving you the, not so much honor, but I'm giving you the chance.
It's an honor, Stacy.
It's an honor. Tell me how you feel about it. No, I just want to know, I don't want us.
The privilege.
I'll be the voice of the select board at the table if you are absolutely against anything that's in these funding options. And we can run different tables, but I think what he's provided is pretty fair. And the other, the board members can have their own opinion, but I will, you know, produce a fair, I guess, a fair dictation of what you guys feel is fair. Knowing that we have the override plan, the state of the town, can we afford 5%? Do we want them to run 2.5% increases and bump this out? Like, I don't think that's what the plan has been. It's been to commit to getting this funded and then see what happens. The other thing in the packet, just to move along a little, is that the idea of the COLA base being increased. Now, I don't know if the world knows that in Massachusetts pension systems, you don't get a COLA increase, a cost of living adjustment on your whole pension. It's on what's called the base, and it's a very small amount. It's, right now, it's $14,000. So everyone that makes over $14,000, they're not getting a COLA on that amount of money, which Social Security, they do a COLA increase on the entire amount. And Paris, you brought up a good point. A couple of years ago, because the Social Security COLAs were so much, the state allowed us to increase the COLA increase from 3%. We could go up to 5%, which the select board supported. It was up to the select board in that case, but it usually, it's just up to the retirement board to approve the COLA, and we usually do a 3%.
And town meeting.
No, the COLA increase is not, does not go to town. The base goes to town.
Or the base goes to, not a percentage doesn't.
Yes, but the percentage is by the retirement board, yep. And we voted a 3. Since I've been here, we've done 3% every year, which is teen, it's, it's nothing to a retiree, to be fair.
But the recommendation is to, is to go to the 3, which the retirement board, to your point, controls.
Yes.
And to also change the base from 14 to 16, which town meeting controls.
I believe what the board is going to decide, whether it's, we're going to, I think we're going to discuss it at the August meeting this month to vote, to propose an article on the fall town meeting warrant to town meeting to vote an increase. Because 16%, we're at 14, which is below average now, and 16 is going to be maybe a little below average as well by the time we vote in the fall because they've had a few increases since the last, I'll have to just download all of the base amounts. So we're trying to keep up. The state is still low, is at 13 for their state pension. So that's, you know, the teachers and the state.
So you could also do 16,000 to raise the floor at 2.5%, right?
Three.
Do we have to be at three?
Well, we don't have to, but we.
What are we at now? Are we at three now?
We do three every year.
That's a retirement board's choice.
Yeah.
Or, but it's 6.5 dozen the other, because you could, we could just have, the town meeting, rather, could just increase the base by $1,600 rather than $2,000.
Correct.
Right, it's ultimately.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we could say the base is 20. There's some communities that I think, was, was it Lexington that went up?
Um, no.
There was one that went to 20. I'm like, how, we're going to pick baby sounds.
The county systems are out there. Yeah, we have one that's 30,000. Yeah.
30, oh yeah, Monague, I don't even know where that is.
Oh.
Wellesley, I'm at.
You have book mill.
You don't need a place you can't find, the best tagline. Wellesley is up to 20.
John Hodgman's a big fan.
Love that place.
That was the one that I was thinking.
Wellesley?
Monague. Well, but Monague is 30, yeah. They have six employees.
Like a very niche location.
Just kidding, I don't know.
You're found it, you're lost.
So this is something to review. John Borac provided, I don't know which one this is, let's see. He provided some information about what the impact of the 16,000 COLA increase would be, and that's, it just shows the increase in the liability is about 1.6 million. And then the funding tables obviously change a bit. To do a 5% increase, we'd pay, we wouldn't be fully funded until 2028. And then they, he also provided one with extra funding, so I'd say ignore that one, but that's just me. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Alternative 3B was having it all funded by 2027, but that's too much. That's a 29% increase. That's not going to happen.
Yep.
So if, if you want to just kind of review the information and maybe discuss it at the September 8th, it's really just sort of a feedback situation.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note, and maybe it's important to note, for Time Report, for Town Meeting, that this, you know, the 3% is the 3% baked into the model that we have. Raising the floor to 16 creates a long-term pension liability that isn't on our schedule right now. Right? It pushes us beyond our '27 goal.
Yep.
Into '28, not a massive number, but it does have an implication. And if the board and town meeting, to get on the pace of every couple, every five years, we go $2,000, our pension obligation then suddenly is still playing catch-up, right? When we think we're just about to get off that hamster wheel, we're back on it. So every decision we make on touching that floor beyond that baked-in 3% kind of predictable increase puts more money at the pension obligation.
So it's a very good, good point and a question then I have resulting from that point, which is the actuarial analysis that shows us at 90, you know, I think 95% funded, sorry, 95% funded, what kind of forward projection is, is PRAAC making, the actuary making for the base growth? Are they assuming it stays at 14 or 16 forever?
They're assuming that it's forever until you make a change.
Okay, so that's, the thing you were saying is.
It's not baked in in two years that we're going to increase it to 18.
They baked in a COLA of three, but they have not baked in a floor change.
Yes, they baked in the COLA, exactly. They baked in the 3% COLA.
That's a very good point. I think we, I think people need to then know that the 95 is actually, if we do increase the COLA every few years, it's actually lower than 95% funded.
Correct.
Yes, right now, it drops. Because we increased the two, it dropped 0.7%.
Yeah, and one time is one thing, but if you do, if that's a recurring change, right, that's.
And obviously, that increase will grow because it's higher money.
It hasn't been recurring, and that's.
No, it hasn't.
Problem. We were at 12 for forever since, I think it was like 1995.
When do we move it up to 14?
That was a couple of years ago. Skip on the chair of the board.
So that's a really important analysis for town meeting to make. This is what you're getting at, Michelle, which is like, is the view then, we're just going to, we're behind, so we're just going to keep growing it? Or is the view that like, this is very unusual and episodic? And I think that the fact that the pension actuaries modeling zero change in the base, like, we just need to know is like, how, it's obviously off by a little, but is it off by a little? Or if we're going to grow this two grand every two years, then the pension actuaries' calculations are off actually by a good bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're a few more years away.
Yeah.
Not saying it's not a reason not to do it, but we should understand.
Facts, just the facts.
What's the sequence or what's the interval in which we're going to do it? Because it does have long-term implications. So that was the point.
So that, I think, is pension. I don't know if you have any questions right now for us, because Karen doesn't want to sit here and talk about OPEB.
Nice to see you, Karen. Thanks for coming in.
Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Karen.
Good luck.
All right.
Okay. OPEB.
OPEB. I literally got this report and forwarded it to you guys, so I, I looked at it, but I didn't really study it too hard. It is a bit, yeah, it's a bit complex. But the point is, and the liability went down, but it, as Paris had mentioned to me, it's not because we did anything and health insurance is great, it's because of the assumptions have changed. We did make a change, obviously, to shift any, any, sorry, Medicare retiree that was never eligible for Medicare, we shifted him to Medicare, paid the, we're paying penalties. We can continue to pay the penalties, but it's a better plan for the retiree, and it's more cost-effective for everybody. So that was a change that did impact the liability, but the discount rate has changed, it bumped up a bit. The way the discount rate is calculated is very complex. They look at what we funded to date, what we still need to fund. We're not meeting our required funding obligations, so they can't give us like a great rate, like a 7%, like PRET does. Yeah, PRET, that's where our retirement money is. But as you can see, it is still a pretty big number. What was that, $137 million? And if you flip on to page, oh, did I write the page? I hope I did. One of these tables will show when, if we were to contribute, oh, yes, okay, page three. There's a column, if you can read it, that shows in, if the trust contributions beyond page ago, so we've been paying, so it's, it's column number seven. We've been contributing $350,000 into the trust regularly. We didn't this year, I believe, and I hope there might be a fall town meeting warrant article proposing that.
Stick around.
But the 5.5 million is what has been calculated as the windfall. I don't know if Parker has too high of a number here. if Parker has too high of a number here. This might be lower based on what the funding, what we've been paying, and what, what we're dropping in the amortization. So that might change, which might change this actual column. But as you can see, down in 2053 is when we start overfunding. You can see that it's now a negative 8.5, and then a negative 8.8, but that's a long way away. So this is quite the challenge.
So I would just make a couple of observations. One, what we talked about, which is that if people look at page six of the document, it's like the, these pages are sort of awfully numbered, but it's page I, I guess?
Oh, I, yeah.
The assumption cha, it's page, yeah, I guess it's page I. The assumption change drove all of the reduction in our liability. If you took out the fact that they, this is the first little checkmark, that they changed the discount rate from 5.56 to 5.98, which reduced our liability by 7.9. If you take that out, our liability actually went up by 2.5. So it was entirely a paper reduction.
Very sensitive.
It's very sensitive, the discount rate, as all these actuarial models are. But the other point I'd make is what you just said, because we, this is one of the memos I wrote in the packet, which is around trust management, under the irrevocable trust, that Anne Gill is the trustee for, our treasurer, it's her decision with the Vice Town Meeting to talk about who the manager is. And you just made a point that we are taking a more conservative investment approach than, you know, Pritt does, the state, Mass Pritt, which manages the pension. And so that's something we should, we could potentially look at.
Well, those percentages aren't what we're making. Those are what we're allowed to get credit for.
Right.
But our, the commissioner of trust funds might be making well over that. They might, I don't know.
Yeah, no, but they're taking a more conservative view. So anyway, it's just, it's a lever we have to help mitigate the liability.
And I do want to mention that the 20% increase in Medicare supplemental plans did not help the situation, so this loss would have been a whole heck of a lot more. Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, that was, that hurt a bit.
Yes.
It's not just Winchester, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's the, I forget the name of the act that shifted what Medicare covers to the supplemental plans. It's not saving anybody money. It's just shifting.
Shifting.
Yeah, exactly.
So 2053, all right.
So I don't have a lot to really kind of discuss with OPEB. He'll, this is his final report, and the financial statements will report what he has. And I can, he wanted to reduce this 5.5 million down a couple of years because pension, because Parac wants overfunding, and this windfall wouldn't necessarily happen in the upcoming years, but I said that's not sort of where we're headed. So.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. I mean, it's still, you know, when we started looking at OPEB in 2011, 2012 on FinCom, and, oh, we're going to fund the pension, then, then, you know, then we'll go to OPEB. It was 2030 was when we thought we'd have the pension funded. So if we get to 2027, if we move the base to $16,000, we get to 2028. But the fact that we're actually looking at a horizon, which 18 years ago, 15 years ago, I would have thought, eh, 23 is going to become 2035. It's going to become, you know, I'll be dead by then, so.
And to your point, the statutory requirement is 40, 2040.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the fact that we got there with, you know, made the commitment, had some, you know, had some earnings, things did, you know, market did what it did. And OPEB, there's some, you know, maybe there's some plan design changes that every few years we seem to do, and some dedicated investment. If it's 2053, if it's 2048, if it's 2060, we're going to be on a path to getting at that, which is great, which, and we're going to get there. We're going to start it a year or two sooner than I thought we would when I was sitting downstairs at FinCom.
We need the discipline to look at the two combined and not use them for other things.
I think that's.
That'll be, that'll be the hardest part, when we don't have an override, and we're looking for money, like, what comes first? Paying teachers or funding this liability that can change by 8 million if you change the percentage of a assumption?
Yeah, but 8,137, you've got to make progress. So this is really helpful.
Yeah.
And so it's, I mean, it's still good news in that there's, there's a plan and there's a little bit of daylight.
Yep, exactly. At least there's a point where we hit the daylight.
If we keep making good decisions, you know.
In 2053, right now, but before, you'd look at the table and it would just keep growing.
Yeah, it is never funded.
Yeah, never even got there. Yeah.
That's right.
This is actually probably the first one I think that does fund.
Possibly.
Yeah, I think this is the first, this is the first one I've seen. I've looked.
Which tells you how close we are to getting there, to flipping the switch. So, good.
Thanks, Stacy.
Any questions for Stacy?
Do you want to stay up here for the article discussion? Or sit back in the audience?
What do you think? Which article is it?
I was mostly kidding with that comment.
No, I don't think you need to. What do you think, Paris? Do you want to tell Stacy to stay?
I was, I was making a joke when she was talking about the 350 OPEB contribution.
The playground one, which I think Stacy is still working on.
Oh, right, the revolving enterprise one.
Yeah, I can, if you want to talk about.
Yeah, speak about that for a minute, if you could.
Yeah, so we have a few revolving funds, the Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half funds, that are supposed to be for programs and operational activity. You collect a fee, you have bills, the fee's supposed to cover the bills, and you're not really supposed to accumulate and build a reserve. I know that the state reviewed our current revolving funds, and some of them are sort of like, we're, we're just building reserves to pay for like, major repairs. Like, even with the field accounts, the idea was to kind of build some money. The field replacements are so expensive, I don't know that we'll ever get there with what we're collecting in fees. But when I spoke with the DOR legal rep a couple of weeks ago, or maybe months ago at this point, about a rebate fund for like, energy rebates, they were like, no. And I started talking about some of the funds we have, and he's like, really? I said, all right, I'm not talking anymore. So he really made it clear that.
Imagine you are on camera. Careful.
Anyway, no, our funds are perfect. They're great. They're running, they're running very well. But the issue is, if the idea is to put money aside for later major improvements, it's better to probably do a stabilization fund. If we're going to collect a fee that isn't really to run a program itself, let's do a stabilization fund, put the money away, and have it be voted at Town Meeting for major projects. That's kind of like what was recommended to me.
So we do a field stabilization fund?
Yep, yep. Or playground stable, whatever. I think it's more playground.
Yeah, so, and in the concept of like, major projects, I talked with Nick about this a little bit in sort of early outset. I mean, some of that is, is just the, I don't know how I feel about Leonard. You know, there are things that failed, and, you know, were not replaced. And so whether that's a major project, or that, you know, to be voted at Town Meeting, like, $10,000 to fix the, fix the bridge, that's an entrapment hazard, or like, is there a mechanism that, sort of that, that can happen, where these things that are outside of, you know, we would need the specific equipment, DPW maybe could fix it, but we would need to purchase like, a new swing or something like that, you know.
I mean, there's an argument that we're going to allow people to use these playgrounds. We might charge a fee to keep them running. Like, there's, there's definitely a reason you could have a revolving fund for it, and just not, the, the, the good thing about a revolving fund is that you don't have to go to Town Meeting and appropriate it, for the most part. These special funds, you have to go and vote a spending cap, and it has to be reasonable based on how much you're going to spend. So there is still a little control with Town Meeting. It's not like a revolving fund, like, school communicate, community education funds, where you get it all, spend it all, and no one even knows how much they're getting and how much they're spending. They're allowed to do that. And the state doesn't particularly love revolving funds, because they want, they want things to be transparent. So the more money that goes into these funds, and the more funds we have, you lose, Town Meeting kind of loses sight of the transparency. But these, I have to say, there is a spending cap, so there's some control.
Yeah, it's almost, it's like, we're talking about roads and sidewalks. There's a bucket of like, roads and sidewalks that's funded from capital.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not dictating, these are the roads and sidewalks projects that are funded.
You get 500 grand, and they can spend it on whatever.
I think we're conflating a few things right here. There's a, there's the, the actual structure of the fund, and then there's the question of, should we be charging people to use our equipment and then putting money?
Yeah, there's a lot of. This discussion is, can we use a revolving fund for this activity if we choose to, you do this activity?
That, that's my point. So it's a bit of the tail wagging the duck, because we haven't had the first conversation.
Yeah, it's probably not ready for, not baked.
That's where I was just going to go.
I don't know if it's a fall time.
Whether it's baked by the 19th or not, I think we probably need a little more information for our packet on the 8th, or whether we need you to come back, Stacy, if we're going to put this on the warrant, or potentially get into the motion language of what is it we're actually trying to do? If it's a stabilization fund versus maintaining a revolving fund for certain kinds of things, and then having a way to transfer. But maybe if you can help us with the mechanisms of this structure.
Yeah.
Right? Let you do these things, this structure, because you could still have potentially both. One with the day-to-day, the thing fails, the broader reinvestments, maybe that's the way to help us think through it. And then the warrant article needs to create one or both of those structures, perhaps. But I'm thinking that might be good. Because I understand, I know Anthea knows the concept, you've explained it to me a couple of times. I know Paris probably understands what we're trying to drive at, but I think you can help us with, if we want Town Meeting to do it, and we want it to be ready for the fall.
Yeah.
What are the, are we looking for one fund or two?
Yeah.
And if we're looking at two, what kind of limits do each fund have? I think that'd be good.
Yeah.
For us.
And I think I was quick to Anne saying, yeah, you can do a revolving fund. I didn't really think about like, the bigger stuff. The little stuff, if they're using stuff and there's activities, you can pay for that, like, day-to-day wear and tear. But if there's going to be a whole replacement of a playground, that's not really the fund to use, that's not really what those funds are for.
Also, just practically, it's the former, because I don't think we're going to accumulate $500,000 or $600,000 in these funds.
Yeah, right.
With Leonard's reconstruction was in that range, right?
Okay.
The only other question was the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund. So the past few years, we've had a practice of taking whatever closeout of the health insurance budget from the prior fiscal year, and putting it into the stabilization fund at Fall Town Meeting. I think there was like, 60,000?
69,000, yeah. It's a whopper of an amount.
It mainly got wiped out at Spring Town Meeting.
If we would have put 1.2 million in, that would have been nice to have that in there.
69,000?
Yeah, it's roughly 69 and change, yeah. I had added 150 at Spring Town Meeting because I just wasn't sure we were going to make it to the end of the year, but we ended up having leftovers, so it was good.
Right, I remember that.
So I was happy. I was a little worried, but it was good.
So yes?
Yes, let's do.
But we're talking just about the 60 grand?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Whatever it is, you'll have.
Yeah, but, but not.
It's not going to be 69,132.
This is, this is just almost like a turnback.
Yeah.
Or even 70, whatever. Because this, we have, turnbacks are about 1.8 million.
That's the operating turnbacks, but those are just going back to free cash.
Yep, so that's good. On 1.8, it's better than.
That's good.
Five or whatever.
It's the first time I've heard that number.
And the revenues is about 3.9, so that's good, too. I did close a bunch of stuff that.
The revenue growth is 3.9%?
That's the surplus, no, the surplus revenue was 3.9.
Oh, got it, okay.
So more than what we budgeted. We got 1.2 of interest income over what we budgeted, which we kind of knew that was going to be a big one. 600 and something thousand dollars in excess transfers, which, we had to close the unallocated wage accounts, which I think accumulated maybe 200 and change. And then the ARPA interest, I was kind of setting that aside. I was just a little worried the state was going to, not the state, the feds were going to change their ruling about the interest. So I left it alone, and it can be general fund revenue. So I poured it back into general fund. So that was like 300 and some thousand, so that's good.
That's great.
And then I did an analysis of some of the money, just old funds, that they're going to be returned back to the housing fund and the hospital gift fund. So those amounts include like, some projects that were funded by those accounts, but they, they didn't finish, and they, they had money left over. So that was maybe like, 30 grand. That is now in your funds to use. 30 grand extra.
This will be good for State of the Town.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah. And there's a bunch of other funds that still need to be reviewed, but it's not a ton of money. So yeah, it's a good close. We'll get more into that on the 8th. I'll be here on the 8th for that.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll have a certified free cash balance one?
Not certified, but maybe certified.
I'll take, I'll take.
It depends, yeah.
Usually like, mid to late September, we get.
Yeah, last year he did it quickly, because he was on vacation, and he turned it around really fast.
Uncertified's fine. I trust, I trust Stacy's certified.
I'll give you what I think it's going to be, roughly.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
It looks good. It's good. It's good news.
Thanks, Stacy.
Our sheets are good.
Thank you.
We'll take some. Thank you. So I thought, in the interest of getting through some things, we would do, let's vote DPW MOU, and then go to Fall Town Meeting articles. Because one should be perhaps a motion, and then we have select board update. So if we can, we had the MOU in our packet. Someone else to make a motion, then, then we'll go back to Town Meeting articles.
Move that we approve the MOU for the local 888 of the SEIU Winchester DPW workers as presented on August 18, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So now with Fall Town Meeting articles, Beth, we want to go through this document? Do you need to run?
I have to leave, I'm afraid, so.
Okay. We have at table, Bill, anything you want to say about Fall Town Meeting articles then, before you go?
Steve sent us.
Got regs, ring a bell, maybe?
I, I did distribute a memo. I don't expect that to be taken up for Fall Town Meeting in terms of aggressive senior review. I think it is still a good idea, but it would be better to spend some more time with that, make sure everyone is on board, instead of rushing it through. I think there are some better ideas that have been put forward that need more attention, and I don't want to distract from them, because we have so much going on as is. And I, I want to call out Paris very much. Thank you for the memos that you put together in terms of some of your ideas. I think it's a really good practice that we all should be doing more of, because it helps really guide the discussion. And yeah, I just want to say thank you for that.
Thanks, Paul.
I wish I could say for the discussion, but I would say nothing more than, these are good ideas.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Oh, sure, Patty, you throw it down.
Michelle, we're switching to Fall Town Meeting articles?
Yes.
So I'll, I can say it at the end, because it's one of the State of the Town update memos, which is some of the senior programs. I talked to you about this as well.
Yes.
Some of those, along with the adoption of the HEROES Act provisions, which are the veteran programs, we could potentially do as Fall Town Meeting articles, too. They're very technical, very narrow, and I think would be non-controversial, but.
Yep. Okay.
So there's a few standard articles that we have every year. The Board and Committee reports under Article 1, rescinding borrowing authorizations, which I'm not sure we'll have just yet. I know Stacy and Mark and Magr are meeting to look at old accounts and other closeouts this week. And then the Committee Action Report is typically the last article at our meeting. So those are the three standard articles, the non-standard articles the board can consider, the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund we just discussed.
So before we move off that, no, I'm just wondering if, do we think, and maybe we don't, but I wonder if health insurance stabilization, given that this will be like, the third Fall Town Meeting in a row, if we can try to move that to consent agenda. I realize that's a little bit later in the discussion, but that seems like it can almost become a standard closeout borrowing and balanced budget. So we're going to do it, and let's see if there isn't a reason to potentially keep it on consent.
Some moderator's decision?
Moderator.
When we typically set up the.
When we build the warrant, we decide sort of as a group.
Everybody kind of talks together about it, but it, yeah.
And any five members of Town Meeting can move it off the consent, and just say no. We want to debate it as a standalone. So, thank you. Sorry to interrupt there.
The Everdav Culver repairs we just discussed, 164 Street. So as you recall, last fall, the town got the authority to acquire it for affordable housing purposes, and was, the plan was to also, at the same time, move it to the Housing Trust. We only received approval for the first part of the action, so the question is whether the board wants to put a motion or an article at Fall Town Meeting to have the property care and control moved to the Affordable Housing Trust.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, the trust is, we've always wanted the trust to kind of manage the.
Yes.
You know, this process. And now they are much farther along, you know, in the, the process of getting some interest and, you know, identifying what the finances are. So I think we can answer some of those questions for Town Meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think at Town Meeting, we, you know, Anthea is nodding, we certainly socialized that it was like, no, we want select board to own. It's like, well, we don't want to own this, and we have plenty of other things to do. And we, in June, right after Town Meeting wrapped, we gave, you know, that, well, even before, please give us work plan trust, please give us some options, please run with this. So we've given them a lot of responsibility very deliberately, and I think we socialized at Town Meeting that we didn't want to hold this property for long, that we thought it really did belong to the trust. So this just follows through on, I think, what we're, what our intent was.
So we're transferring the care and control to them?
Yes.
Or we would potentially be, okay.
We would ask Town Meeting to, yes.
Yeah.
Which shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, I think.
So the next few are really just still kind of concepts, adoption of the HEROES Act, which I think State of the Town has discussed. The playground revolving or stabilization fund.
More to come on that.
Renaming of McDonald Field Playground. I know that's something the Committee on Government, or, excuse me, the Committee on Names has been considering, and I don't know if there's interest in having a select board co-sponsor it, or if it would just be the Committee on Names bringing that forward if it was ready, but.
Yeah, we can.
What's going on with that?
So there's a petition, there's a three-year, I think, three-year delay period. There was a petition to rename McDonald Field Playground after Jim Johnson.
Who is the, I'm not, who is the original field name after? The playground is named after no one.
Yeah, the playground.
It's the playground.
The playground itself.
The play structure, which he was.
The Stone Family Playground again, I guess, similarly.
Fair enough.
So what's the three-year prohibition?
I think it's 10, isn't it? It's, there's a delay from when a person passes to when you can name something after.
Oh, so you're not.
Schools have five, I think, so I don't know what the.
Well, so there was the request to, to waive that, or to.
I see.
Wait. It's a, it's a request to waive the waiting.
I see.
Waive the waiting period.
That's what it is.
So that's what the article would be. Both to waive and then to take the action.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. The, the next one is, there was a, I believe in your packet, there was a memo from Town Council about a new provision that allows transfer of on-premises wine and malt liquor licenses to all alcohol beverage licenses. So he provided.
Similar to what we just did with new Valmaison.
Some standard language. This is a different.
Different vehicle.
Yeah.
Yes.
So he provides some standard language if the board is interested in bringing that forward as an article to Town Meeting. It sounds like there was some confusion about the authority, about whether it was a select board initiative, or whether it had to go to Town Meeting, but it's, Town Council has ruled it has to go to Town Meeting, so.
Sure. Are we the only body to sponsor that? I guess we sort of are.
Well, you're the alcohol commissioner.
Alcoholic.
Yeah, alcoholic, I know.
Yeah.
Not like the chambers.
We're gonna, yeah, they're not a body, yeah. We're going to sponsor like, 15 articles.
Yeah, sorry, is that to allow somebody who has one to be able to transfer, or is Or is that to allow that they transfer?
To allow, I think it.
So instead of applying for.
The memo in front of me, I think it still has to come back to the board for final approval, I believe.
So instead of like, they need to apply for a new license, they would have just applied to transfer their license.
Transfer, yeah.
Yeah. I grew up in a very dry town, so.
Me too.
Me too.
And then I think there are a few that Paris had brought up. So one was the possibility of expansion of parental leave, the timing for non-union employees, that would be a personal policy got to change. The hiring of additional custodial staff for Lynch School, that was something that was a request of the DPW. Given the size of the new building, they were concerned about the ability of just the existing staffing level to adequately clean the building. That was cut from the manager's budget, so the consideration is whether to add it back through a budget amendment. And then finally, I think there was some discussion about the possible installation of solar facilities at various town locations, either through a PPA or purchase of equipment ourselves.
I can share a little more on these, so, because these have been, these have been moving targets. So just to go in order, adoption of HERO Act provisions, which was something Beth and the assessor had talked about following the state of the town conversation. We'll talk about this in a few minutes, but I think we can add some of the senior programs to those. I would, I would recommend we do both of those. They're very limited populations and I think populations we want to protect. PPA for solar, this is primary, so the, under the Trump law, the Big Beautiful Bill Act, the credit under the Inflation Reduction Act are sunsetting. And so there, when you buy an installation, there's 30% credits. For a PPA, the credit goes to the offtake partner, so select or whomever we would go with. But it obviously then is reflected back in the price that the town receives. So one of the state of the town works stream, I think, four items we've looked at, you know, solar from the perspective of can we defray some of our municipal operating expense? We have three arrays currently, you know, on our schools, one at VO, which is a PPA, one at the high school, which is a PPA, and one at Lynch, which is a purchase agreement. So this idea is the, we've identified, we had a meeting in this room, Michelle was there with our sustainability manager, a bunch of other people. The head of DPW for schools was there. And we identified, I think, about eight sites. The one that actually has, because you can imagine, everybody is trying to get solar moving ahead of the credit expiration. So the one site that has the most support from the vendor, but also the scale, is the high school gym. And then there's been a debate historically about whether or not it can sustain the load. I think there's been studies that say it could, there's, you know, some people who want to diligence that a little bit more. But this would just be a placeholder article. And we could do it the way that was done two years ago, which is, and which Michelle presented, and actually have two placeholder articles, one for ownership, one for PPA. Or we can do it, you know, if you're going to pick one or the other, it'd probably be PPA, just because it's, you know, there's no upfront capital outlay then. But I think we, we need to do more work on this and we're, you know, working pretty actively. But given that the warrant is closing on the 19th, we just wanted to put it on the list for something we would. I would, I would hope the board would be interested in supporting. Expansion of parental leave is a very, a very simple one that ended up being a very complicated one because there's union considerations and also because there's a state law PFML, which carves out municipalities, but town meetings can accept it. No, town meetings have because that then has to be coordinated. So it turns out to be super complicated. I did speak to the Personnel Board about it, to the Personnel Board Chair about it. I think that would be one we would want to study. It would not be, it would not be, certainly not ready for fall town meeting, it probably wouldn't be ready for spring town meeting because it's pretty complicated. But, but there's a world in which we would, we could potentially do it if certain, you know, bargaining units bargained it. I think it would just be the wrong approach to start with non-union employees. And then it becomes an issue with our union conversations. So that, that's parental leave. I think we probably need to slow that one down a bit. Yeah, strike it, slow down, or we could, we could ask a group to look into it more. But it's complicated and not just in Winchester, it's complicated in every town that's tried it.
Yeah.
Which is unfortunate because, because, you know, I thought it would be a more straightforward one than it turned out to be. Custodial for Lynch, I think this one probably has to come from schools. The only reason I suggested it, Beth and I had talked about it months ago, I think we talked about it again a couple of weeks ago at this table. The issue there is while it should come from the school committee, of course, the workers are on the municipal side, the meeting DPW. So if that's something that they feel like they need now, we can talk about it. If they feel like it's something they don't need now and we can revisit later, that's, that's fine too.
They feel like they needed it, I mean, they asked for additional staff in the.
They, is the school's leadership?
No, the DPW.
DPW, yeah, so I'm, I'm saying if, yeah, yeah, exactly. So our, the municipal side of the government is clearly suggesting we need it. I guess I would, I would say we can keep it or we can, we can wait until the school's leadership occupies the building, confirms that they need it. This is like the funny.
Schools, everything, they don't, they don't manage the custodians.
But they have to live in the building, right?
And so just one question I had, I remember Beth from the budget conversation was, we knew we'd need it. Do we do it mid-year? Do we let the school run for a few months and see? Because I'm just curious, like, are they going to use all the classrooms? Are they going to use all the spaces? Does it make sense? So that we get to a fall town meeting timeframe.
Yeah, I mean.
But do we want to just sort of have some experience with it? And either it's a FinCom article to adjust the budget, it's a standalone, it's a, hey, we could use a half a person or we need them on after-school days when there's extended school, like, I just don't.
Yeah.
I must say we don't need it, I'm sure we do, I just wonder if the timing and if we know yet.
I'm certainly happy to have that discussion with the facilities director. I will say, I've heard from multiple DPW entities about a real concern about the ability to clean that building. It's a much larger building and it's a complicated building, not just size-wise, but it's a more complicated space. And so I certainly think that they can use an additional FTE there, that's what they requested. I cut it out of the budget for purely financial reasons, but if we're talking about, you know, $1.8 million in turnbacks and other, I don't know, however much Stacy said.
$3.9 million.
Excess revenue, feels like it would be on a, you know, $92 million brand-new school, it feels like it would be a good investment in being able to maintain that building, so.
I was just going to say, like, timeline-wise, by putting it on fall town meeting, and we were not hiring that until January, February, probably.
So the school committee is going to take this up on Thursday too, by the way. So in terms of if we want, I mean, I appreciate exactly what you're saying, Beth, which is why I raised it, which is the DPW workforce does report to you and therefore to this board indirectly. As the, this is the, like, this is the funny part of our school buildings, which is the DPW works for us, but they're the occupants of the building. And so if we want them to go first, I think they're discussing it on Thursday.
And I guess the other question.
And then we can talk about it on the eighth.
Do we know, do we have custodial vacancies now that Bob's trying to fill? Like, this isn't post-it, it's not even a personal.
Yeah, no, I mean, they, they definitely have, I don't know if they're open postings, but they've, over the past few months, they've had quite a few. There's always quite a lot of turnover on the custodian side, so they're, they're always quite often posting. And then people will get promoted and then it opens up a position that was a custodian, somebody moves up to the head custodian, so, yeah.
So I think the reality is we may not get that, to Anthe's point, we may not get that resource until December, January. But let's, let's see, and if it should be better, agreed?
Agreed.
Yep.
So just as an FYI, there are two positions posted.
Current vacancies. Okay.
I, the reason I brought it up, Beth, a few months ago, you brought it up with me rather, we brought it up a couple of weeks ago. I mean, I don't want to see a $95 million school open that we can't clean. And so I don't particularly care how we sequence it or the approach we take or we want schools to lead first. I just wanted to make sure we didn't, it didn't get lost in the shuffle, that's all.
That's good. I think this is still, the floor is still yours unless that was the last of your articles.
That was it.
Okay. So on the eighth, let's agree on the ones that are ours for sure. If we are ready to co-sponsor, we talked about the carriage house, if we know more about Everett Ave. If, we certainly gave support Person's Corner. If they have any other requests to co-sponsor, if Committee on Names has a formal request for that, let's just see where we are. And obviously the packet will close on the fifth for that meeting on the eighth, so. Not that we couldn't take another vote to co-sponsor, but we'll be good to know what people are eyeing for us to put our names next to. But I think everything Beth has on the list makes sense. I think Paris, as you're, as we know more about solar, we may, we may put two placeholders for two and we can always, when we go to print, you know, this has been postponed if we just go a PPA route. So, okay. Any else on fall town meeting? CPA related or anything? All right. Select board updates. Paris has a ton of state of the town. Anthea, you had some goals. I'm going to give Anthea the choice to start, tee it up, what would you like?
Why don't I start the very high level? If we are able to, we're going to have to have the phone duo us.
Yeah.
Thank you, Patty. Very high level, so we proposed having a select board goals discussion and we kind of kicked it off earlier in the summer and then punted it and then we were discussing, you know, maybe we need to wait until we have. We have a new town manager in place and have that as a collective discussion versus, thank you, I just need a clicker. So this is really like high level, what are kind of our operational priorities almost, are the things that we're really working towards. So none of this should be too surprising. So thinking of, this is kind of like within the next year, what's our operational priority is our short-term, the very first year to three months, midterm, three to six, and long-term, six to 12 months. In the, in the short-term, we've talked about a new town council, a timeframe for that, that's in process. Phil is, Phil is sort of our lead on that work, we know that's a piece. Likewise, this is Beth's last big live meeting with us, hiring a new town manager, having some support by means of search to support our board, having somebody onboarded around the turn of the year, most likely, also in process. I've been working on that, Mike and I will be too leading that. We also have, I think, some of this that we'll talk about tonight, but some major sort of policy decisions on our policies around reserve funds and some smaller policies as well that are coming up, winter parking process. And, you know, do we foresee any adjustments to that? And then our, our long-term, which is our operating override, which has the State of the Town Committee that's been operating, whether that's a, you know, special town meeting to vote that, should have just said like overall process, but that's in progress. Paris is leading that and then with Michelle. And then comes a full circle back to what I started to say, which is, you know, having then this, this broader select board and town manager goal-setting of not just the operational things that, that we need to do as a board, but, but going back to what those bigger goals are and then having new leadership in town, you know, what their, what their goals are, what, what they're going to be working towards as we sort of go through the contract cycles with them and evaluate their process. So that was just sort of pulling together the really like high, high priority things that we have going and not necessarily in the scope of, or in the sense of, you know, what are our, what are our goals? What are our, you know, things that all, the umbrellas that all of these will fit under? But what are the things that are our top priorities and that we're, we're driving towards within the space? So I think certainly we could add, there's probably a few things to add, which I'm happy to do. You know, we can periodically like check on this, this was more of a checkbox activity than a, you know, discussion or finessing over time, but just kind of getting us all looking at like, what are the big things? We probably talk about them, you know, at every meeting, but what are the big things that we have going on?
So I agree with that, those are certainly our key areas of focus, for sure, short, medium and long. And we're going to put, some meetings are going to go long, some longer, we'll see. Because, you know, the, the override is, is one thing that could be next March than this, on that ongoing fiscal responsibility, select board policies around fiscal responsibility. I think those will continue to play out. Some will want to set before fall time meeting, some will want to set, you know, as part of an override conversation about some discipline we want to do, right? So I think that's, timing is not as important, I think, as like there's a duration and we're going to power through all of them. I think as it relates to sort of goals that aren't there, one thing I'd like us to see, we talked about it in our one-goal-setting discussion is, and I think Mike and I, Mike was, had a slightly different angle, but, you know, customer service. And when I joined the board and we did this the first time, it was like making like easier to do business with the town. Like this, the general, you know, we've, we've heard through state of the town that online bill pay, when you pay property tax, I used to be able to contribute to senior tax relief, I can't do that anymore. I can't, if I pay this way, I can't do this, check that box. If I pay this way, it's a challenge. So how do we sort of streamline just transactions with the town, applications with the town? I'd like to see that customer service lens and we can always kick that around. And then Mike, you think you had thrown out last month was the, kind of that survey and collecting data on that experience, which is a little different from just tweaking all the things, but how are we actually collecting from our constituents? So I think that's one thing I'd like to see and we could define what that means, you know, like customer service as measured by what, right? It's, we can streamline some processes, we can make it easier to transact business, we can collect data and try to fix or have that inform where we put our next area of focus or efficiency or software can, can help us with that. That would be mine, that I would want to maybe add to the, the blank space and I'll stop there. Paris just has more fiscal policies for us, no, I'm just kidding, you have broader goals.
I have as many as you want to read, Michelle, so.
I know you do, that frightens me, but it's true.
I, I think this is a good, a good, a good list. I mean, we could all wordsmith the exact language, but, but I broadly agree with everything that we're talking about here. And I do like adding some of the sort of ease of, you know, ease of doing business type, type of things. I wonder if there's a broader one around continuing to really partner with some of the other boards? Because I think to the extent we've convened people around this table, it's been extremely helpful. You know, the obvious one being FinCom, School Committee, but then there's things that get into capital and having, and even occasionally planning, but certainly capital. When we've had them all together and then with us, that makes four boards. Here, we've, we've actually been able to have some real conversations and I, I think that's, a lot of that is in the context of the state of the town process, which I've said before and I continue to believe the, that group in reduced format, we don't need to see that large members and other things, should just meet every two months sort of in perpetuity. And, you know, the charter says we're the head of the executive, right? The school committee is part of the executive, the planning board is part of the executive, we're supposed to be head of the executive. And one role there to me is convening folks to talk about some of these cross-functional items.
So a governance, communication, intra-board coordination, something like that. I don't have a good headline, but that's a theory. Mike, add one, two, three more?
I think that, you know, covers a lot. I think we talked about the, that kind of customer service piece of it that I think is important. So I think, yeah, for now, I think our list is representative of what's ahead of us.
Okay. And I think broadly, I mean, whether it's beyond my time on the board or who knows, but I think when you look at, I just use that example of, I think it came up with state of the town, right? That we couldn't donate to senior tax relief and it was, when I paid by paper, right? I didn't know. But it's, even just to think about it from a change management perspective and implementation perspective, when we purchase the software, when we move this service to the cloud, move the service to the web, what are we missing? Like, have we actually recreated all the activities we can do? And is that just a discipline that we can get into in making purchasing decisions and software decisions? Like, what's the trade-off and is some functionality, does it need to get picked up somewhere else? Because that's just potentially funding, it could have been tens of thousands of dollars that just we weren't collecting and didn't even realize. So I think we should maybe just get in the discipline of like, not, not trade-offs, but truly, is everything we're doing on paper replicated in this thing we're trying to automate? And just have some rigor around that.
Yeah, I think, you know, the other thing, you know, I mentioned a few times is creating these norms and we, we mentioned it kind of here and there, oh, we've got to do that. And every kind of, every time we hit a tripwire with something, we say, oh, we need to come up with a policy around that and establish some norms to add some predictability for residents, but for us too, especially as the board changes and management changes. And so I think that that's really important for us as we kind of identify our kind of shared values around these, these specific issues. So that's, I think, something that we really need to like focus in on over the next several months.
Okay. Norm setting, got it. Okay. Paris, Anthea, are we good if we move to Paris?
Paris, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I'll be brief.
It's 20:25 PM.
I, I know, I will be brief. So before I get to state of the town, this is, because I think this agenda item is technically committee updates, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so there's, let me just talk about a CPA one first because this one's quick. There's a memo at table for everybody, which is three pages. We've been talking to them about the idea of letting volunteers project-managed CPA projects. And it's, it's a reasonably complicated approach. There's no legal reason it can't work, we just needed a bit of a process. So I've been working on this, Michelle, Mike and I have talked about it, I've talked to the WCCP members a great deal. And then of course with town management with Beth and with Mark. And then we had a meeting today with Beth, Mark, Stacy and Jay Tollerman. So this memo, and there's some, you know, tidbits and stuff in here, I'll clean up. Lays out a process by which we would, number one, coordinate with, you know, the, the town would coordinate with a volunteer group that was proposing to do a project, decides it can be town managed or volunteer managed. If it is going to be volunteer managed, lay out all the controls and the coordination that we would expect of them. And so WCCP has asked for a note like this, I drafted it as coming from Beth, Michelle and myself. It could really come from anybody, it could just come from the select board as well, or it could just come from town managers as well, to have sort of for their files because they're comfortable with it, but they just want to make sure that they have, they're on good, solid legal as well as administrative ground before they do so. So I just wanted to see if anyone had any comments on it, because I would, I would like this to sort of come from the select board as well as from town manager to CCP in the next, you know, few days.
Yeah, this is great work, thank you guys for putting this together, Paris. Yeah, this is great work. Thank you guys for putting this together, Paris.
Yeah, Paris, if I have any, I know we have this, if I have any things I want to tweak, I'll make sure I get back to by like close of business Wednesday.
I found my own edits while I was sitting here reading it, so.
But the spirit of it is certainly, as we mentioned, we've discussed with some CPA staff with some other interested parties, so.
Thanks, Michelle.
So, you know, the, you know, I know it's kind of targeted towards CPA projects and all of that, but, you know, I think it's, you know, maybe a little bit broader for however projects are funded or done.
Good point.
And should be kind of added to our select board policies, you know, on our website as well, if that, if we vote to do that. And we've got six or seven kind of static policies that are there that we probably need to.
More to come.
There what?
More to come.
No, I know, I know.
One of them is about to not be static, Mike. We're going to have three tonight, hopefully.
We have dynamic policies.
Right, that's right.
Yeah. I think we do have our 2022 goals up there though, so we got to update this.
Update at least one policy you're like up, Rex.
The point you're making is a good one. There's, this is agnostic to funding source, actually, now that I think about it. It's come up in the CPA context, because that's where we're actually inviting nonprofits to apply for funding, but there's nothing that would prevent somebody coming from doing this with, you know, capital stabilization fund money or something.
Or it also might be useful for our Eagle Scout projects that come up consistently, right? Where maybe we're not even, they're not spending money, we're granting access to town land for picnic tables or whatever, and they seem to get done, but even just having this as an easy way to say, here's a checklist and here's what your volunteers need to do. We're not necessarily doing core rechecks if we're not near children, but like, what are the things we can do? Because we get a lot of those asks.
With the farmer and, you know, things like that, you know, I mean, I did a lot of work and there were a lot of people organized around doing work in the fast forest there and everything and, you know, it just kind of happened. There wasn't any sort of.
Right. People showed up.
People showed up and did things, so.
We have a lot of that in town, right?
Right, yes.
Okay, so Anthea, good?
Yeah, I mean, if I have wordsmith minor edits.
Great. Yeah, so if people want to send me wordsmiths, that's good. And Beth, would you like it to come from you and the select board members or from just you? Okay. So I'll make any, reflect any edits tomorrow. I'll get it, Beth, over to you by Wednesday and then we can provide it to CCP.
All right. So that's one item and the rest of the items are quick too. So people have, it's in the packet, the State of the Town updates. So the first thing I wanted to talk about before I get into the three updates today is that Workstream is five and six. Five is tax fairness. So this is looking after both our senior population. We also found our veteran population, that's low income in both instances. And then just the broader, the broader sort of equity issue of making sure we're not burdening our cost burdened households overly to the extent we can. That's Workstream six. Workstream five is, sorry, that's Workstream five. Workstream six is fiscal stewardship, meaning making sure that we are treating our operating reserve policies the right way, looking at our long-term bonded debt the right way, and looking at liabilities like OPEB the right way. So that's, that's kind of what's in these. And what I've put here on the first page of this table, we have State of the Town meetings, we had the meeting on the 25th, we had select board on the 28th, where we talked about the initial review of operating reserve. Today, on the 18th of August, I'm hoping for a final review of that, because the board gave me the go-ahead to draft a revision to Select Board Policy Three, which I'm going to go through. Similarly, we talked about enhancing the management of the OPEB trust at State of the Town on the 25th, after some conversations I had with Stacy, with Ann Gill and with the Chair of the Commissioners of the Trust Funds. I want to have an initial conversation about that tonight. It'll be quick. And then I would bring that on the eighth for sort of final review. And then you see similarly for debt management and senior programs and then the residential exemptions, the other part of tax fairness. So again, similarly from senior programs, I would hope to have an initial review conversation tonight. And then it doesn't need to go back to State of the Town, so a final review conversation on the eighth. So I'm just trying to organize the way the workflow would look for those two. So I think if we close out these two work streams, that'll be important so we can shift to some of the other, you know, larger and more central topics of State of the Town. But this stuff can get ignored if we, if we don't sort of pin it down. So I'll start with the operating reserve policy, which is the second page here. We have a policy that currently, that calls for six to 10%. We talked about this a few weeks ago. The other thing that that policy does is it has a split between general stabilization and what's called undesigned fund balance. That's basically free cash plus a couple of other categories. That, you know, undesigned fund balance or free cash is drawn down much more regularly. General stabilization requires a two-thirds vote. It's not drawn down really much at all. It hasn't been drawn down in about a dozen years. An old FinCom chair told me today that she does remember it being drawn down prior to 2009, but Stacy has no memory of it being drawn down in her time here. So it's been at least a dozen years. So the idea being, we want to be split between the two. We're currently sitting at 15% total, which is good, because we want to be, as we talked about last time, 10 to 14%, but our split is a little bit out of whack, which is to say we're much higher on the undesigned fund balance or free cash and we're much lower relatively on general stabilization. So what I've drafted here on the next page, the recommended actions, Michelle, this was a concept you mentioned last time, which is, do we start to put together an annual programmatic transfer, which is to say every fall town meeting, we move money from free cash to general stabilization. It's all still operating reserves. It just puts it behind a slightly taller wall and therefore enhances our, you know, fiscal stability. That's a question. I picked the number, as you all have by now figured out, based on the OPEB number, there's no magic that number. It could be 250, it could be 300, it could be 150. But just to start that, that process, the other thing that I would, I would definitely recommend is a one-time supplemental transfer on the other side of a spring, you know, or whenever, 2026 override. Once we've topped up and stabilized our revenue position, that would be the time to make a larger one-time transfer. For example, if we were to double it to approximately $11 million, that would be about, that would be about 10 million. But if we were to go to the top of the range, that would be about 11 million. So do we, do we really use that general stabilization to anchor, you know, the range and get that up to 7%? Then free cash can just be the part above that. And then again, in our, in our current select board policy, which we've largely preserved in the revision to Select Board Number Three, is that it actually says six to 10, but then it calls for the select board to guide town manager to bring the general stabilization up to that 10. And so, so again, should we preserve that as a long-term target? I would argue that we should, especially if we're moving the whole range up to 10 to 14. So that takes us then to the actual revision, which again, everything I've said is consistent with our last conversation. So when you look at Select Board Policy Three, the first section, the financial summit, is preserved word for word from the existing Select Board Policy Three. That's no change. The structural balance sentences are largely taken from the current operating reserve policy, which is a standalone document that actually doesn't sit in the select board policies. So this is sort of bringing that in here. In preparing the town budget, it's a long-term goal of the select board to have a budget that establishes recurring expenses equal to recurring revenue. That's basically a word-for-word lift. And then the next sentence, as a result, it sort of brings the two concepts together. The select board recommends limiting the use of free cash to balance the operating budget. The old policy sort of ended there, period. This one says, based on the operating reserve policy outlined in the following section. So it sort of links the two. And then what we go into here is a more robust operating reserve policy. So it sets the standard at 10 to 14%. It says, we should not go below 10 unless we have a clear emergency. In the preceding 11 years that I have data for, we have never gone below 10. So let's be clear that, that's not a number we've reached. If we are going below 10, it should be a clear emergency, because the rating agencies do not want us anywhere near a single-digit number. So we ought to have a very good explanation for why we've done that. Between 10 and 14, we should minimize any use of free cash to allow reserves to build organic, rebuild organically, because we want to be on the upper end of that. Again, we're at 15 today, even after free cash use at Springtown meeting. So between 10 and 14, we do want to be heading up closer to that 14. And then if we're above 14, selective uses of free cash may be considered, provided there is both a sustainable funding plan in place for the immediate year and for following years, or it could be a capital use. And so the idea being, you know, it's not practical to say we're never going to use free cash above that figure, because we do. But this brings our policy much more in line with the way that the debate at town meeting actually occurs, which is to say, if we're going to use any free cash, we need a clear pathway to sustainable funding, not just for one year, but for the, for the subsequent years as well. And then similarly, the split of reserves, as I was describing before, idea being split between five and seven of each, which is exactly what the Department of Local Services guidance is from the state. And then the long-term goal is to achieve general stabilization balance of 10, and that's consistent with our current policy. So that's the rewrite to Select Board Policy Three.
Paris, I kind of forget this number here, but you know, what's kind of our average free cash usage, you know, you know, on a yearly basis when we, you know, I would say non-budgetary, just kind of.
Oh, non-budgetary.
You know, so without using it to balance a budget, right? Because we do, we do use it for kind of special projects, you know, that are, you know, outside of the stabilization funds or.
Yeah, I have a slide that shows that breakdown that I've shown before in the past.
Right, yeah, yep.
It's been all over the place.
Yeah. It, I mean, we have a special case where we put 2 million towards the high school gym floor where.
What year was that, Beth?
So between the gym floor and then we used the overlay money, right? So there's.
ARPA. So I think, Mike, I think on an average sort of, if we just weren't doing, like last fall, we put a lot toward capital.
Yeah.
We did library, right? Windows.
Non-capital, there are always.
I would say 1.2 to 1.4 of adjustments on operating budgets. Maybe it's less than a million, but in some years, so like adjusting a budget or reserve fund or just something walks in that's like a one-time cost. So, you know, 350 to a stabilization fund, if we were to do that out of free cash. So something like that that walks in or purchasing something if we were to like get behind a capital purchase. So I think in the general just flow, you know, we're low on snow and ice, where we put money into health insurance in the spring because we thought we might need it 150. So I think on the, just one-offs, it's 800 to 1.2.
Literacy as well, you know, the.
Literacy, yeah. So it's right around a million, low million. Then you get into things like pay for the library windows for 2 million, throw a million at a gym floor. Then it's like, that's another million, that's another 2 million. So just outside of the general yellow sheet, it's 800, I'd say 800 to 1.4 on any given year. It just comes in in the course of a year.
We're somewhat handcuffing ourselves for, you know, doing that in the future if we're.
Well, I would say we're not though, right? Because the town operating reserves have fluctuated between 10 and a half and 20%. They've never gone below 10, despite all those uses of free cash over the preceding 11 years. And what ends up, this is an attempt to sort of intervene, because what happens is, I mean, this past year, we were at 18% and we had a huge fight between school committee and FinCom about using four and a half of free cash, but it's ultimately going to be less because of the turnbacks. That brought us to 15, right? So we're debating it at levels that are well above the policy that we're talking about writing here.
I still think we should try to get to eight before we get to 10. We should go eight to 14, but I'm not sure we should set the floor at 10% in the next two years.
Yeah, I think that was, we had kind of discussed that strategy a little bit when Moody's had kind of recommended to us that we're, you know, a little bit below, you know, some of our peer communities on that to phase, phase that range in over time. So.
Maybe it's 8% in '27, it's 10% in '28. I think still potentially, you could caveat the 10% in '28 based on an operating override in the spring of '26 or subsequent. But I'd almost like to see us go 8% and then 10% and then stay at that 10 to 14, which doesn't blow your, everything below, I think, makes sense.
I don't.
I think it's a jump that's a bit dramatic without knowing something that just might walk along.
Yeah, as long as that is part of the kind of policy here that we're phasing it in in those years, you know, so it's not just go to eight and then cross our fingers.
Do nothing, right.
Well, again, I'll just, at Springtown meeting, we had a big debate. We were sitting at about 18 about whether or not we should go to 15. You know, finance committees could view that we shouldn't, right? And we still did it. We ended up at 15 on a, on the basis of if we used four and a half of free cash, we'll ultimately use less. We'll probably end up back at 16 anyway. And so I would just say, we've kept our policy so low that it just, it's almost more like irrelevant to the debate than it is binding us.
Agreed.
Like, it's kind of like, well, select board's policy is six to 10 and Moody's wants way more than that. So no one's even talking about our number.
No, I think we have to show good faith in moving it. I'd just like to move it maybe over two fiscal years.
And I think it's important as we're talking about override with residents, that, you know, some people will have those questions. Well, if you have that higher reserves, why are you looking for, you know, more revenue? And the point is, is that this is what we're being told to do and, you know, by Moody's and we need to, we need to show some movement there, I think, because I think they've been letting us kind of float for a little while, so.
And so it's the balance, right? Because you can't go out on an override with huge reserves. Like you just, but the flip side is, we want to show people accurately that we are not going to burn through the money, right? And so it's the question is, how do we, but right, the right balance from a policy standpoint, but also from a, from a, you know, communicating with the resident standpoint. So if the board says, let's go eight to 14, and then, you know, we could either revisit it or we would, we would trigger into, you know, a nine, 10, I don't think that's a big deal at all.
Yeah.
I also think it'll just allow us to communicate on the floor of town meeting, like, okay, if we're at 18 and we're going to use a half a percent of free cash on a recurring thing, that's not a huge, that's actually not a big problem. If we're going to use 2% a year on recurring, that is more, more of a challenge for us. And because right now, what we've done is we've set our policy so low, it, we're sort of opining as individual town meeting members. We're not able to take a collective view based on a policy we've agreed on.
Yeah. And a policy in a way, I suspect at some level, we've kind of been operating in this much higher unspoken, you know, going to stay sort of pretty high above, but because it is in the six to 10 policy that it, you know, creates a lot of this discourse on how are we, what do we do when we have X amount in free cash and our policy says 10, so, yeah.
And the other thing I'll say to that is, so if we, if we think it's eight to 14 with some phasing, the other thing that when we borrow, right, for a lynch, and we don't have a massive, huge debt exclusion, like notwithstanding a town hall improvement, which we may well package, but we don't have a big school construction project in the immediate future. But when we borrow, right, with whatever it is, and that, then we get that revenue and it adds to our denominator and therefore our reserves just inherently drop. Like, when the base grows with additional tax revenue, our target gets harder and harder to reach. So I think we're in, we're in the lynch borrowing now. This is going to be the number that we're living with and then incremental growth to the budget. But if we keep building or taking on additional debt service, we keep incurring revenue that grows the denominator, so that fraction gets harder and harder to maintain. Or at least, you know, every year you.
And the Moody's response to that is, you have a larger asset base that you have to maintain, so we want you to have larger reserves.
Agreed. I just think that sometimes if we did nothing and we just, sometimes we would still be slightly falling behind as we take on more, we borrow more from residents, we pay off some debt. So another reason to maybe start at eight. But a jump from six to eight is not nothing. A jump from six to seven is like, eh, we're barely listening to you.
And I think also moving the top of the range is probably even more important than, than the bottom of the range. So that would be my view. So I think if we moved eight, is the, is the group comfortable with that, eight to 14?
Yeah.
With a phasing, okay.
I am. Are you, Anthea?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with you in bringing, you know, some language in there and, you know, whenever FY '29 or whatever we're moving to.
Yeah, putting some teeth to get it on a schedule.
Great.
I think before you lay that out, you might want to see where the results of the financial modeling are for different override scenarios, because that's going to, if you're planning an override that's going to last three to five years, then maybe you want to target that lower end based on what your timeline is and where you're going to be projected out on that, on that financial model.
I think we've, we've definitely done that. I just think the question is what, you know, we can, we can design a set of policies that reflect just what we want to spend. We also have to constrain ourselves a bit with the policy, right? Because the whole deck I presented last time and presented State of the Town is that, you know, to maintain the 20% Moody's available reserve ratio, we really ought to be at a number like this, right? And similarly, S&amp;P gives you the highest rating for 15. So if we do take it as our view, and FinCom stands on the floor of town meeting and says this every session, which is, we want to be, you know, we want to maintain a AAA rating, which I assume is our view as well. I do think we, we owe it to the guidance we have as a, as a board that guides town. think we owe it to the guidance we have as a board that guides town manager on the budget preparation to say, we are going to, you know, try to preserve these figures. And obviously, if we don't, and then what Moody's ultimately cares about is not, you know, did we breach it? It's what's the number. And in a world in which we've ended up in some kind of a big problematic area, and we've dipped reserves down to the single digits, their biggest concern is not, you breached your policy. Their biggest concern is, the reserves are in the single digits.
Correct. How do you get out of that? Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Do you want to talk senior tax relief? Do you want to see if we take it up before state of the town? That's a question for you, if that was the next thing you wanted to get through tonight.
I will be very quick, I promise. Okay, sorry. That is not the answer you wanted, clearly.
I didn't say that last time.
I did say that last time. Okay.
I won't tell you how many made it seniors.
Brutal, Mike. Senior tax relief program, this is just conceptual. I need to go do some work on this with the council on aging, with the other state of the town members. You see the grid on page six. There's a bunch of changes that I think that we should make that are very technical. Renaming programs, changing, and this will be a fall town meeting article, the tax deferral program, where you can defer a part of your taxes. We've changed the interest rate, but we haven't changed the level of income. It's at $60,000. We could raise that up to the maximum under state law, which is $109,000 for a couple, 72 for an individual. This is, the next one is a select board item, which is, raise the total limit on our volunteer program from $1,500 of rebate to $2,000. And that would imply the wage would go up by $5 to $20. And then similarly, we can raise the maximum limits to 72 and 109, which in that case would be a select board vote. So those are the changes I would recommend that we make. One point I'll make, HERO Act, I think we should do, and then Beth and I were talking about this earlier, we, on the CPA, there is an item in there for low-income seniors that we accepted at town meeting that we never implemented, for them to actually be, not receive CPA funding, so we need to make sure that's implemented. Like, it's...
It's a certain exemption.
The $100,000 exemption is implemented, the low-income senior exemption, which, and you guys recommended and your study group and town meeting approved, was never implemented. So there's no way, there's no form you can fill out to actually go get it if you are in that population. So we just need to do that. And then there's one other one, which is, we went through Belmont's, you know, pretty carefully, which is around, it's basically minor child of deceased parent, surviving spouse, widower, widower over the age of 70. It's again, a narrow one, but it's something all of our peer towns have. So I would recommend we come back with the council of aging and this work stream and just implement these. These are all limited to pretty at-risk populations. I think they're non-controversial.
So the only thing I would say to the, going from 60 to 72, which is the state lead, which is kind of like the floor of retirement benefits, at COLA is at 12, COLA is at 14, do we go 60, 66, 72? Do we do it $6,000 increments over two years?
I'm fine with that. I would just say this, all this does is allow...
I'm just like the queen of incremental today, but that's...
Because you're at a town meeting, so do you want to go back to town meeting?
No, it's select board, no?
No, no, no. You're talking about, so volunteer program?
Volunteer program, right.
Are you talking volunteer program? Are you talking about tax deferral?
Both.
Both. Volunteer program, they only have about 10 members each in them. They're way off their high watermarks of 50 members, 45, 50 members. So the question is, do we want to adjust the number of people who can participate in them?
Understood.
Yeah.
So maybe it's, whether it's tax deferral or not, let's just see, you know, that's a quick comparison. If we go to 72, it's probably fine. Like, how many people do we catch? I'm not worried about a work break effect that suddenly there's like, we thought that we're 35 seniors, there's 150.
I don't think that's...
But I'm just, I'm just curious if, are we really, you know, outside the range of normal with our peers? Do we get there over two seasons? And if we could tweak volunteer on ours and then let town meeting decide that, you know, they take the whole bite, I don't care. I might be fine with 72, too. I'm just curious if that makes sense, if we stand out as like remarkably cheap versus getting up with what the state allows. So that's my only bit of homework.
Yeah, we're not remarkably cheap. The, you know, places like Belmont and Lexington and, you know, Wellesley are at the upper end of the range, but we're not like cheap compared to the average town. But, you know, we've had that, the participation in this program drop over time because the 60,000 hasn't been moved in a long time.
Yeah.
So there's just a very, you know...
So we may well be missing people. So that's fine.
And this is just where people defer their taxes, they still have to pay them ultimately, right?
Of course.
All it does is push it out a little bit. Okay. So people, good of me bringing this back as...
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, last one, I promise. OPEB trust management, this is the idea of saying, when the quantum of assets in the OPEB trust fund surpasses $10 million, we would, under the irrevocable trust that Richard Howard signed, the treasurer has given sole authority to hire a third-party manager, whether it's MassPrim or a third-party for-profit manager like a State Street or a Fidelity. You know, the idea here is that when we cross the 10 million mark, which could be, as we heard from Stacy, as early as next spring, we would ask the commissioners to no longer manage the fund directly, but to work with the treasurer to recommend a third-party investor who would take that over. Just the idea being, you're allowed to use the state for this. We could use the state, we could use a third party, but we have the $150 million pension with the state, with MassPrim, which is a, you know, large, very well-respected manager, manages $115 billion. Having volunteers manage the library and the cemetery trust fund makes sense. But once we cross 10 million and we start putting $5 million a year into the OPEB trust fund, we probably do need to move to a professional manager. I have talked about this with the chair of the commissioners, with Anne, with Stacy, and I think everyone supports it once we cross a certain level. So I don't think there's anybody against this.
So would we look at this, so we could make the policy ourselves, and then a forthcoming town meeting, do we think that could be spring town meeting?
Spring.
With Anne presenting it?
Correct. So the way it's written in the irrevocable trust is the treasurer decides on a third-party manager with town meeting consent. And so the reason that we would play a role here is to, again, convene, you know, the treasurer is indirectly our employee via the town manager. The commissioners are people we appoint, and they are the, really the only people we have resident in our town government, where all three of them are professional investors. So she could use them as sort of her advisor, and they could help monitor the manager and all that kind of stuff. And then, you know, we would just bring that article together, whether the treasurer would bring the article or the select board would, you know, or both. We can decide.
Yeah, I think in the spring, we did, we did one that was both treasurer plus us, I think, around that account, whatever it was, accounts or something, closeouts. Okay.
So...
We typically...
Select board with Anne? Oh, it was just us.
So again, just the idea being, we have, the pension is managed sort of by, you know, by the state professionally, third-party managed. The commissioners are terrific, but we are allowed to use the state or anyone else for OPEB. So we should, now that we're starting to accumulate real assets in there, we probably need to do that.
Yeah.
Any reaction on this?
No reaction on that? Okay, so we do have appointments, Palooza, and consent agenda to get through.
Yes. Just want me to...
I can ask him what you've heard about my sending you all, everybody's application.
Sure you read them?
Yes, that's what I would say.
Would you like me to just start going with these?
Yes, please.
People have questions. All right.
Yes, please.
Move that we appoint Walter Hubbard to the Cable Advisory Committee for the term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we appoint Ashley Stevens to the Cable Advisory Committee for the term to expire June 30, 2028, the acknowledgement that we're waiving our year waiting period to reappoint for this role.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we reappoint Arson Bagdassarian to the Cultural Council for the term to expire July 31, 2028.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move that we appoint, reappoint Riakarki to the Cultural Council for the term to expire July 31, 2028.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we appoint Margaret Lynch, we reappoint Margaret Lynch to the Cultural Council for the term to expire July 31, 2028.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we reappoint Jason Capodano to the Field Management Committee for the term to expire July 1, 2028.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That we reappoint William McPadden to the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee for the term to expire May 31, 2028.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as posted for August 18, 2025.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Adern?
Yes.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, Wincamp. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
We'll still see you on Wednesday.